Good evening. I call to all the city council meeting. That's our committee of the hall meeting for Wednesday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the council are present with exception to council member PAC. We're joined by council office as well as Mayor Burton, various members of his staff, and others here with us in chambers. First item of business tonight is discussion on the Copper Rim preliminary development plan and master development agreement. I believe this one is going to be, uh, the name on here is Ray McCandless, but yeah, Ray, are you sharing this one?
Come on up, Ray.
Ray, we need you up here because there's going to be some questions that you can answer to.
Now we have our ray of sunshine up here.
He doesn't take any sunshine, right?
Alright, council member PAC has joined us. Meeting on our button on the right. And it's not working. It's blinking green instead of red though.
Yeah, they're not on hold on. You're not on work session mode.
There it goes. There it goes.
Alan, have you got the clipper? Are you going to run the slide? Okay, yeah, let's go on next slide. So what we're looking at this evening is just a request to amend the preliminary development plan um and master development agreement for the Copper Rim. Plan development that is located approximately um located uh on the east side of Mountain View Corridor. Let's try that. Is that better? So the request there's a is to remove the requirement for when this was originally still crackling, still sounds like it is. Alright. Uh, the requirement for two hundred and four age restricted senior housing units um in phase nine and then replace it with a hundred and thirty-three market rate multifamily residential townhomes. The app can also request you to make a number of other changes to the um the development plan and we'll walk you through some of those changes. So what we're looking at this evening is for some council direction as to whether or not you think that changing the preliminary development plan is is the direction you would like to go. And I think what we'll do is just kind of walk through the slides, um, next slide. And just kind of walk through it.
Alright, can you bounce back to the, okay, I want to look at the questions for council.
Count, oh, there's some questions from the council on the previous slide.
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So um, yeah, allies is misspelled uh under the second one, but um the first part is that you first issue we need to take a look at is um whether or not you support replacing the hundred and ten or four senior dwelling units with a hundred and three thirty-three market rate townhomes. Um, if yes, then let's understand that the balance, the uh, in order to do that, the balance housing ordinance needs to be amended or we need to put another ordinance in place in order to accommodate that. There's some other things that are proposed in this plan and I'll go through those, like revising the the phase boundaries, relocating dwelling units, uh, removing some private dollars and then eliminating a ring road around phase nine. Um, next slide. Uh, the first, uh, with this, I need your feedback on is whether or not to remove that the age restricted senior housing in phase nine and replace it with the market rate multifamily residential townhomes. Next slide. Phase nine, um, just on the left hand side of of your screen is the Mountain View Corridor seventy is south is is on the north side. Phase nine is is just one of the, in fact, this is the last phase of this this development. Uh, the original preliminary development plan uh in phase nine was for senior housing. And on the right is the the uh revised, it was revised a while ago, but uh this will be uh a request for the market rate townhomes and that's uh what the arrow is pointing to is that that section. Next slide. Okay. Section um.
Keep going and then I'm going to ask the question because this this slide's incorrect, but keep going.
So replacing the two hundred and four senior housing units uh requires amending city code if if that's the way that you'd like to go with it. Uh, section thirteen dash eight dash twenty-three B one E two uh balanced housing ordinance states uh that two family and multifamily housing is not exempt by the provisions listed in sections B uh one A through B one D. The section shall comprise no greater than seventeen percent of the total number of dwelling units in the approved master development plan. So with this um get the master development plan, this thing's still cutting out. With the approved master development plan, the senior housing was exempt under the provisions uh under these provisions. And so uh any everything that's it with the exception of the uh area in phase nine, senior housing, and then um also the IOZ uh would have to meet or meet meets that eighty-three percent single family to seventeen percent multifamily uh standard. But if you are to remove that, I don't know, the um the senior housing replaced with with townhomes, then you have to count that in the in the uh that total ratio. So the ratio would change then from sixty-six point nine percent single family or two six sixty-six point nine uh percent single family to thirty-three point one multifamily. So there will be a reduction in the number of units um it it as proposed, which would take the number of dwellings from four point six dwellings per acre to four point two dwellings per acre.
I'm going to interrupt you. The original development in Copper Rim was seven hundred and fifty-three. And added a hundred and thirty-three units and added eight seven and went to eight seventy-eight. So how do we go from eight seventy-eight to six eighty-two? I'm I'm missing the math here because we were at eight seventy-eight. We're dropping two hundred and four, we're talk, we're dropping eighty units. Uh, we should still be in the eight hundred range.
It was one of the, one of those were at that was with the the IOZ. I just don't have those numbers in front of me, but it was a hundred and twenty, it was a hundred and twenty-five units were added as part of the IOZ because those were not in the original Copper Rim development proposal.
Yeah, but they're part of, but they were part of the NDA that they're part of the Copper Rim NDA for the PC zone. Right? So because I mean, the amended development agreement in our packet um that that shows amended shows eight hundred and seventy-eight units.
Right, and that would be, that would be including the senior housing off of in the middle and then off of the IOZ.
Okay, but the IOZ is part of this, so the the whole thing should have the numbers of eight seventy-eight, correct? That that's all part of this PC zone, even with the IOZ overlay that allowed with a little bit more density here. Am I missing something here?
I think we have that IOZ as a separate.
It's part of this, it it's part of this amendment. I I looked at it la- the other day. Okay, leave it at that.
Um, next slide. Um, I don't know if I need to go through the, this is just a copy of the my the balance housing ordinance and then just this just shows the exemption, so um, I just put an example up here. I don't know that's necessarily the the way that you'd like to go. Um, we did have I think Duncan Murray has given us just, and I think you may have got a copy of this, put on your desk just recently. So as an option, um you may want to look at this or look through this a little bit.
Ray, ours is balanced housing. It looks like ours is the ordinance. Is that what you're referring to?
This is just, yeah, it's the one that says balanced housing at the top. So this would be just maybe a suggestion of uh if you would like to proceed with um the proposed changes, this may be just as as an option. Um, let's go to the next slide.
Let's talk about this section first. Okay. I'm going to jump in. And I and I've got some questions. When, so I I'm just going to go, I'm going to ask these questions. When when did the PC chain zone change from fifteen to twenty percent open space? Because the original documents on this show fifteen percent open space was on was required and the PC zone shows twenty. PC ordinance shows twenty and all of a sudden the 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 master development agreement here says, well, fifteen's good enough, and I'm wondering where that came from. Do we have any idea? Okay, so um when when this, what what was the, what were the anticipated concessions? Um, when we, when we, when the council approved two hundred and four units for the seniors? Because that's a, that's obviously higher density. There had to be some concessions based on certain benefits that seniors would have over a regular house. Do we have any idea what those were?
No, it's anyway, well, it was the amenity package that was contained within this. I think it was part of the open space that was above, but you're saying that there's
Okay.
still the twenty percent, but I think part of that was the the pool clubhouse, those kinds of things that the um that the residents would be using.
That that in this particular packet, it shows that Copper Rim wants to build four-story townhomes. What's the height of those?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've also asked the Boulder Sego Homes here as well, but we, I believe we have to be under thirty-five feet.
Uh, it's four stories or forty-five feet. So it it it's three, I'm sorry, three stories or forty-five feet. So a four-story building unless it's under forty-five feet can't be built there. So um, so here, this, I'm going to ask the big question and then I'll give you then and then I'll give you a couple of opinions. We want the 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 proposed amendment to the ordinance says that we, to the balanced housing is that we 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 follow the eighty-three seventeen unless the council finds that this is in the best interest of the city. How is this in the best interest of the city? I don't, I I can't see any benefit to this at all.
Oh, that language that you're referring to is is not currently in, it was.
I know, but that's what we're asking, that's what somebody's asking us to put in the ordinance and so I'm, so that means that somebody believes that um, changing from the two oh four to the one thirty-three market is in the best interest of the city and I am trying to figure out what it is. Well, from my two cents, removing seventy-one units in the same space is less dense. So for me, that's a happy thing. Okay.
Well, hold on, I, well, for my two cents, it's the same thing I've I've said for the entire time I've been here. We we need it, we need senior housing. And a lot of people that I talk to that are my mom and her friends and they move out of West Jordan because they don't have an option. And in fact, I had the conversation with her today in talking about where she's living, just on the border in Taylorsville. And she was talking about possibly moving and she's like, there's no place in West Jordan for her to go. So I I've been saying this all along. I don't want to keep cutting out senior homes. I want to add more senior homes and in fact, I'd like to see some rentable senior units. So people can stay in West Jordan. They're the ones that don't have children that are going to school, well, hopefully. Children that's going to school, they have more disposable income and being closer to uh some of the shopping and that's, you know, it's great. So I I wouldn't vote for this to change because I don't want to keep cutting out senior housing.
And council member Jacob, I don't disagree with you that reducing seventy units from the overall total, but I just pulled this up and I'm looking at the amended, I I I'll read you the title. First amendment to master development agreement Copper Rim. And that's where the hundred and twenty-five units were added. Um, it it will change the density for the town center at Copper Rim, hundred and twenty-five units, additional forty-seven um, single family and seventy-eight townhomes. That's part of Copper Rim. And so that was part of the master development agreement that was amended. So when we have numbers up here that are seven fifty-three, uh the the first thing that I'm wondering and and I'm going to, I'm is you you know, I I'll just stay away from that comment. The we 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 have approved seven hundred, we have approved eight hundred and fifty-eight p units on that property. What's, what what we don't have in front of us is what's the final density going to be? And a couple of other things because the numbers are just not accurate, but let me give you a a couple, a a couple more thoughts and and then I will tell you that I am willing to look at modifying the ordinance, but I'm not willing to modify it as proposed. If we want to change phase nine to something that matches more along the integrated housing ordinance, um, you use that twelve to depending on what numbers you read read in the in the the packets between twelve and fourteen acres. If we want to use that and make that more of an integrated housing that's got single homes, multifamily that look, I mean, I'm talking about following uh by analogy, the integrated housing ordinance that we have. If we did that, I'm okay, I I would be willing to change the the PC ordinance to say specific phases can be approved if they use the integrated housing, particularly with the fact, and I will hammer this. This is a hundred and thirty-three market units. The PC ordinance encourages affordable housing up to five percent. There's not an afford, there's, there's two, there's, there's two hundred acres here and not one affordable house, not one affordable, one, one affordable housing unit. Um, you know, phase nine, if it's fourteen acres, point five, that's seven affordable housing units if we uh adopted the the integrated housing type ordinance. Um, maybe we ought to have a little bit more. Part of my point is, is that when you put apartments isolated or townhomes isolated, people become isolated. The idea of having homes integrated throughout and and small houses and big houses and those kind of things is is the neighborhoods of the 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 late fifties, early sixties and seventies as you drive through Salt Lake and other towns. The 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 isolation of a hundred and thirty-three townhomes that have no driveways according to the drawings, don't match the PC code because they border seventy is south and they're supposed to have setback from across the street and have a the 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 most restrictive zoning from across the street. Um, setbacks and some of those kind of things. Uh, we're, we're building this in isolation and and I think this packet is premature because it doesn't take into consideration the PC zone and how the PC zone is written. Um, partic, you know, and you know, obviously this was entitled before we changed the driveways to twenty-two feet. But some of the, you know, I just don't see how a fourteen-foot wide townhome is going to have a garage that's going to fit any car in it. Um, it just, it's just not going to work. Um, it it's so if we want to look at some more creative options, looking at the true density, looking at some better things, I'm going to be willing to look at it. But if we're talking about um modifying the ordinance as it was written in the packet with modifying the the eighty-three seventeen uh and just modifying that straight up and saying in the best interest of the city. Uh, all that does is open the floodgates that every developer is going to come in and say you can go more than seventeen because it's in the best interest of the city for you to build high-density housing. That's what we're going to hear and I don't want to open that floodgate. And so my, 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 my thought is we want to look at more integrated, uh, less um, maybe even some less dense, some affordable single-family homes, um, some affordable multifamily units in there. Uh, I'll be willing to look at it, but just to say, well, we're going to put in another hundred and thirty-three market that that no.
Okay, um, my question is, why would you want to change from the age restricted? And I have read this, but I don't because it says it's not feasible due to low rental rates and slow absorptions. Is there is there information about that? I'm very curious on where you would, where you got that.
Come on, there we go. Hey, I'm Matt Dean with Vice President of CW Land Company. Um, yeah, you know, simply that we looked at uh several economic analysis for an age restricted project and it just doesn't work. Um, we can only obtain lower rental rates at this location. Uh, you put the fifty-five plus restriction on top of that. You're limiting yourself to a very shallow pool of renters. And it, you know, after studying it for a year, we just determined the age restricted designation just doesn't work. And if it doesn't work for us to self-perform that development, it's not going to work for any other developer. So our idea was to avoid a failed project and do something different. And doing something different, we wanted to offer a lower townhome segment that could be attainable in the high threes and low fours, which is exactly what this project is doing at Daybreak. So if you look at that as a case study, Sego Homes delivered that project in the threes and fours and the fourteen-foot wide does work as a tandem garage. Um, those absorptions hit six units a month and very well received in the market as attainable. That was the idea and to get the critical mass at a hundred and thirty-three units, offer a reduction of density and water ERCs of seventy-one units. We thought that would be a good concession. Um, and try something different other than something that just doesn't work.
Um, I'd like to see the case studies for the fourteen-foot wide townhomes because we can't see that getting passed with this council, in my opinion. Um, but I'd also like to, I I think, I think having something that fits some of the standards like our twenty-foot driveways and stuff like that is going to be a lot more, it's going to pass a lot better than something with a fourteen-foot driveway. Does that make, does that make sense? Wide, yeah. Fourteen foot wide is not going to pass.
It does. Um, all that information is in the packet.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
Sorry, so what was delivered at Daybreak were twelve-foot wide.
Wow. Okay.
So question, were you planning on renting those over fifty-fives? Is that what your plan originally was?
Sorry, the two hundred and four was all for rent.
Oh, okay. I don't remember that, but okay. Um, and when you're wanting to build other units on this property, are you planning on having those be rentals or owned?
The hundred and thirty-three is proposed is all owned.
Um, you're wanting to know how we feel. Is that correct, Ray? Well, I'm opposed to removing senior housing overlay. I'm pretty sure that's part of the reason you got this planned community. And what we need more of, and this is from our governor, not from my words, but our governor, we need starter homes. And he means homes, not townhomes. And so if you wanted to bring something back that would achieve that and that could work, but I'm also not interested in changing our balanced housing ordinance. I think that was a wise ordinance when wasn't me, but the that put that together. I think that was in the best interest of West Jordan. Um, e- even though you're lowering the number of units, you're increasing the number of vehicles. That just happens when you take off in over fifty-five, so that is a big issue in our city. Um, and I just can't, I can't say yes to what you've proposed, how you've proposed it.
Alright, my turn. Um, I really appreciate you being here tonight and the candor of, well, we've looked at this for a year. We just don't believe it's going to work. Um, and and the need to find a creative solution. The 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 things that are running through my mind are, well, there's a couple of things. Number one, balanced housing came up because we had some issues where uh people were trying to put high-density multifamily development in places where it didn't really fit. Um, we have the senior housing overlay that helps offer a little bit of relief and get it into additional places, but the council, at least my perspective, when when we did that, was that it lowers the intensity of use on the property and in return, there's something for seniors and the developer gets a little additional density. Um, so I'm really hesitant to remove the senior housing component. I'm also wondering from a precedent perspective, what would this do for other developments? If others see, oh, this is the way that you can get around balanced housing. We can say we're going to go this route and then we can remove the senior housing component and then put in something that was uh that would otherwise be prohibited. Um, I would want to make sure that any solution that was proposed addressed that specific concern. Uh, and I I I I appreciate the idea of having a line in here that says, you know what, if the council deems another percentage is better, they can go ahead and run with it. Sometimes we like to think that, well, it's nice for us to have some freedom, but at the same time, when we're looking at other councils, we want to make sure that there's some guardrails because they might not think about all the different aspects and we also don't want to give developers a false hope that, oh, they can, we can just pitch what we'd like. I do appreciate the reduction in the number of units with the change in housing, though. I um, while I I and I'm not sure what the exact number should be. I actually think that's probably close to what it should be because while we are seeing a reduction in number of units, we are seeing an increase in intensity. And we're going to, I I would have liked to see additional green space added because, well, in addition to traffic that we're probably that the the change in numbers may address the traffic, but I'd like to see additional changes for green space. Uh, council member Green brought up some of the um elements that you typically see a little bit further down the line, like the exact placement of where these go are the setbacks, right? Does it match all of the requirements of the PC? I I I really appreciate where you're going with this. I'm not quite there, but I'd be happy to hear more and understand a little bit better. The the thing I do want to ask, um, the bottom three bullet points on this, overall improvement from the original development plan. Uh, if you want to take a second or two and talk about why you feel this is an improvement and explain why the relocation of units is not a concern. And then also um standard lots are less costly to maintain for homeowners. The explanation as to why, but also why that would matter for this decision. That seems like that would be more on the sales side than on the the land use side. I I'd be curious to hear on those three, please.
Yeah, I think as um there's a couple of reasons why it might be an improvement over the development, the original development plan. One of those is that um with this with how they've proposed, it's a reduction in number of, of overall number of units, as you just mentioned. Um, deem out of open space, I think would would increase actually with the way they've got that that line. Um, how they've given us a a concept behind showing how how that is. Um, single family would probably get it more space in that, so um, I think just in. I think just in the terms of, um, number of ERUs, I think. It would help, uh, from the utilities department, they were indicating that it would be, be an improvement over senior housing. Um, just for the reduction. So, uh, with this slide, we're talking about just some, uh, kind of minor changes. Um, some of the, if you look at the top of Phase Five, uh, there, in the original plan, there were smally-loaded units. Um, those have been changed to just kind of the, the standard subdivision lots. Um, but it's just, it's, the standard lots are just less costly to maintain for the homeowners association just because. You've got alleys or the additional, um, alleys that are in there, so. And it only applies to a couple of, of places in, in that plan, so I really think that it's. Um, it's, we don't have any issues with that part of it. I don't know if you have anything to add.
Yeah, just a couple, a couple other pieces as it pertains to Northern Copper Rim. Um, when we started to get into this. We found that the phasing lines just didn't work. If you look at the phase line, for example, between four and five. You'll see that only provides one point of access, so in consultation with planning and, uh, fire department. Uh, our proposed phasing lines now offer two points of access for looping of roads, water, et cetera. For each phase, which is required. The other thing we found was, for some reason, the prior engineer. Um, prior to the current engineer. Uh, had some of the lot widths incorrect in Northern Copper Rim, so in an effort not to lose density and keep the minimum lot width. That we were required to keep in the, in the MDA, we did some minor density shifts between phases, but to keep within the overall cap of density. So those two things are fairly innocuous, but just to keep the intent of the land plan.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate all of the work that's gone into preparing this. I know you're just looking for directions so that future time and effort. Is spread to the best few as possible. It seems, uh, to try to encapsulate the conversation and to encapsulate. Ideas that I've had, and as I've talked with residents regarding this, if you want other surrounding neighborhood issues. It's all about trying to find that balance of low-density, decent price point, senior opportunities. Gosh, in three more years, I could move into a fifty-five and over, and I think about how much money I'm spending in my utilities on a, on a half-acre lot. And the time that I'm actually on my grass is usually just having it mowed. Taking care of it versus enjoying it so much. So I know that the new business model is more of a smaller. Lot, but then people don't want that in their backyard, right, and beisom and. And because it's not necessarily congruent with surrounding neighborhoods, so then what do we do? Well, we try to put some. Developments that aren't right up against other developments, but then that inherently costs more money in infrastructure, and then we as council, of course, try to put that. More on the developer instead of taxpayers. So i-It's that delicate mix. Of providing some gentrification opportunities for starter families. Family homes, senior housing, you know, so people can age in place in our community, and I think if we do it right. We can have that here with some smaller starter lots and some senior lots. But the key is trying to find that, uh, price point. Lower density is great. That's what most people are saying that they want in the neighborhood. The issue is, if you have, you know, do the math on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home with our interest rates, even with a decent down payment. You know, you're over four thousand dollars of a monthly payment. So then where are our kids going to live? I couldn't afford to buy my home that I live in now at our present prices. Uh, so low-density, wonderful. Thank you for taking that down, appreciate it. While also noting, we, we do need some senior housing, so I too would be hesitant to totally eradicate the senior overlays on. There was a reason why you wanted that in the first place, and understandably, times change. If there's a reciprocal give-back, then it, it's malleable. You know, we, we can work through that, right? And I see that you're trying to do that. And I know that's why you're here, trying to see is this what city council is looking for. Um, so connectivity, transportation, thank you for bringing that up. That's always a big issue as well as impact on schools, which we can't necessarily. Consider in our capacity here. So the, the idea is, if we can find that balance. Of trade-off, we gave concession, so what's going to be given back? When it says no staff concerns, understandably, that's from the staff's point of view, and, uh, I guess one person's concern is another person's non-concern. So I personally would like to see some senior opportunity left there. Lower density is great, but there still needs to be a decent price point, or else then you're still in the same situation that you are now. You can't sell a senior home, but then you can't sell the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar homes either. So it's gotta be somewhere between there. Um, in addition, it'd be nice to hear a little bit more about the commercial phase historically on. Planning Commission and Senior and City Council, we've seen that. The plant, the commercial phase kind of waits until the end, and then, wow, we can't really develop that, and then that kind of gets. Uh, kicked down the road, so, um, do you have any thoughts relative to what I? Mentioned there, that balance of senior, low-density and price point, plus, uh, the commercial phase?
Yeah, for the past year and a half, we looked at multiple versions of the age-restricted, and I'll, I'll just rephrase it. It, it just doesn't work. It's upside down economically, which means if we're not gonna develop it, and we sell, there's no, there's not a buyer for the land either. Um, the other thing we did was we, um, or this past, past week, fired up a land planner, do a really quick study. On what kind of yield could we get for doing all, uh, detached on the site? With the idea of, as another potential, you know, creative solution. Could we offer that as attainable? That yield for smaller homes comes out to be in the fifty to fifty-five range. The challenge with that, and again, running a pro forma on it, you just don't have enough critical mass to make it attainable. Hundred-and-thirty-three units of towns has, is enough critical mass. Fifty to fifty-five detached. Isn't enough critical math to make the economics work. What happens is the cost to deliver the lot is higher. Than what you can sell the lot for to an attainable developer, so the project's upside down. So we continue to look for some kind of creative solution to make use of Phase Nine, and we're starting to run out of options. And I think that's why the one-hundred-and-thirty-three was proposed.
So I just wanna remind you, though, that we already gave you a big concession when we about halved the commercial. And let you put in a bunch more townhomes. So I feel like we've already had concessions to help you pencil everything out. And I understand you have to pencil things out, but we have to make it right for our residents as well.
And see, I think, I'm. I'm gonna have an unpopular opinion, it sounds like, but, um. What else is new, I guess? A, a couple of questions, so. First blush, I, I, I like it. I like you're removing eighty-some odd units. I like that. Or seventy, seventy-three units, I think is what it is.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one? Didn't have it in front, in front of me. Seventy-one units. Um, removing seventy-one senior units, I think. Comes out car-wise about the same as you would have with two-hundred-whatever senior. Um, units, I mean, obviously fifty-five isn't that old, I mean. I, I'm, get, well, yeah, a lot of us up here are getting there.
It is not old. It is old.
Um, and a lot of us still have one car per driver in our house. Uh, in my case, that's four. Try getting car insurance quoted with four cars, by the way. Um. It's, uh. It, it, it provides a really good buffer, I think, from the. More dense unit across Seventieth, by the way, there's apartments north of here on Seventieth, which make no sense. Considering what Seventieth South is as a road right now, and those are there right now. Um, this is a nice little, I mean, townhomes make a nice, nice little buffer between high-dense apartments and. Medium-density, single-family and townhome residential. I think townhome makes sense there. Senior housing kind of does too. I, I, I don't think one is necessarily inherently better than the other. Um, there's nothing stopping somebody over fifty-five from buying one of these units, of course. These are not age-restricted in reverse. Um, I, I love the renderings. I think the, the, it looks very attractive as far as, uh, uh, development goes. I've seen the ones in Daybreak. Provide the pictures of, um. Very, very nice, very attractive, very cool, urban, kinda. Feel, and I think it would become, I would think, I think it would be a very attractive place for young families. Um, maybe not, well. Find me a starter home under four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and maybe they are starter homes these days. I mean, I, I think that's the price point the state is trying to set right now. By the way, next year it'll be five-hundred thousand, because that's just the market. Um, I don't think it's the city council's responsibility to dictate what the price of your houses should be that you build. Um, that's kind of an anti-free market thing, and if you ask me, I think if you build it and it doesn't sell, that's not on us, that's on you. And you don't want that, and if you build it and it doesn't rent, that's not on us, that's on you, and you don't want that either. So it's, it's not for us to say you can or cannot build a certain thing. Uh, that's just my two cents. Um, but as far as working something into an overall plan. I, I love the idea. I'm not sure I love the location just because of what Seventieth is, so that's my question for Ray, and maybe for. Anybody else who wants to chime in on this from the staff is, what is the future of Seventieth South in this area? And we've got, on the north side of Seventieth, back down the hill a little bit where it's actually in the city limits. Is single-family homes on. I mean, according to our code, a sing, a, a street with single-family home driveways coming out is a residential street. A collector road has residential streets to plug into the collector road, but doesn't have homes coming out onto it. And an arterial street sure as heck doesn't have homes coming out onto it, except for where it does. This is gonna be an arterial street. This, when this development is complete and it comes all the way through to the north side, Seventieth South is arterial. And it's got houses on it, and it's two lanes, and it's really narrow. Um, I don't know what the timeline is for Phase Nine as compared to the rest of the development. I was out there. Campaigning just a couple of weeks ago and, and, um, love what's there so far. But as soon as that punches through, that's a whole nother traffic nightmare on Seventieth South. So what is the future plan for Seventieth West of Fifty-Six? Is it gonna bridge over Mountain View? Is it gonna be widened?
I think that's the plan, isn't it?
That's the plan, is to, to bridge over Seventieth.
Yep.
Bridge over Mountain View to U-111, over Mountain View and the train tracks then?
Yep.
Um. I would, if this was gonna go in sooner than, let's just say, the school district property that's on the flip side of the elementary school here. I would ask the developer to enter into a pioneering agreement to widen that. Cuz that's not done yet, right? That north, that south side of Seventieth, between the elementary school and, and Siena Vista there. Is not yet widened, so I would, I would ask them to.
Can I address that? Um. Our plan, part of our submitter for Phase Four. Was to extend Northern Copper Rim Drive from the existing cul-de-sac all the way to Seventieth South. And then one of our MDA obligations is to widen Seventieth South along the border of Copper Rim. So we wanted to submit that plan set to widen Seventieth South concurrently with Phase Four and complete the loop.
But that's adjacent to Copper Rim. I'm talking the part that's not yours, that's the.
East of MVC?
East of MVC.
East.
East of the elementary school that's already there, so you can see it on the picture up here. Between, uh, uh, it's, you know, your, your property is kind of shaped like a half of Utah, in the Wyoming section there. That's, that's the part I'm talking about, is we'd ask you to enter into a pioneering agreement with us, with Jordan School District, and widen that. So that Seventieth South can handle the traffic all the way down, and so it's not going in and out, and in and out in front of people's houses. Where it goes down to, you know, two lanes without even a stripe in the middle of the road, where people are parking on the south side in that dirt right now. Because there's not, you know, cuz the road doesn't exist to, to allow it, so. Um, that's something that I might ask it as a concession. We talked about, you know, what concessions you can give back, that's, that might be one. And again, that'd be a pioneering agreement. You can get reimbursed, yada, yada, yada. We've got that, we're not reinventing the wheel here. Um, but as a community, I like it, as it is with the access, I don't love it. But as an overall concept, I think you're on the right track. I think you're, you're taking a bunch of units away. You're building a less-dense product. Um, this is the second time in eight years I've had a developer come and suggest a less-dense townhome product and. From a denser apartment product. And the first time, the city council said no. I was on the planning commission, actually. It was right before I was on the council. And then the, the planning commission said yes, the city council said no. I still don't get it. So I still, whatever it is, down by, um, Fifty-Six and Seventy-Eight, down, um.
Oh.
The Peterson, no, it's, it's on the east of where the Panda Express and the medical buildings are there now. Um, because it was gonna take away, the townhomes were gonna take away six feet of, of, of a park. It was gonna make a park that was like. Thirty-five feet wide down to twenty-eight feet wide or something like that, and so the council said, no, you're taking away too much open space. I said, but you're getting rid of? Never mind. Anyway, way back then.
Um, my, what I guess I was asking earlier is, when you put in the packet those townhomes. And they're, they're really nice, and it's great. I think I wanted to see that same information of why you're getting rid, you wanna get rid of the senior housing. I wanted to see the statistics. I wanted to see the kind of the tables and that sort of things. I had a better understanding of where you were coming from. Um, that's, that's really what I was asking. Um. I think, you know, you said that we're coming down to lack of options left. I think. What other options have you gone through besides these townhomes? I wanna, I, I think there, I think there's a solution here, and I think we can get to that point. But I also wanna say, is this gonna be an issue for future developments? Are we gonna run into this for other things? People are gonna come back and like, look, we can't sell this. We can't do this. I wanna know why, so we're not running into this anymore.
And then just a lot, uh, just a couple more comments that I had. Um, given the, 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 the description of the townhomes. I can just, I can just see, cuz you see this over at Echo Ridge. I'm gonna, I'm gonna use Echo Ridge Apartments as a perfect example of, uh, their, uh, the, you know, just west of Cisco. Drive through that neighborhood and see how many cars don't park in the parking lot. Because it's easier to get to their apartment front door from the street. So my question is, with this layout and proximity to Seventy is South. How many of those townhomes that border Seventy is South are they gonna park their cars on the street? Because it's easier to park there and walk into, and we have, which, which complicates the issue that Councilmember Jacob talks about. Uh, with, with Seventy is South, so tha-That's one of my concerns. The other, the other concern is, is we're going from two-hundred-and-four units to one-hundred-and-thirty-three. I think we ought to be increasing the open space, and I didn't see anything in the packet that showed me that open space was going to be increased. Uh, at all, because the footprint of one-hundred-and-thirty-three, uh, you know, obviously, two-hundred-and-four was probably stacked and. Hundred, but these one-hundred-and-thirty-three are four stories high stacked on top. I'd like to see some better numbers, and the, the thing, and, and the other thing is, I would like to also see, just, just, just so you can. To see is, the comparison with Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, Phase Five. And won't be, that, because the original plan for Copper Rim was supposed to be. Um, four-point-nine units an acre. We've well gone past that with the eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight. We're, we're now at five-point-something, um, and with the, with, we, we, we could be easily five-point-seven or what. And when we start talking about we're in the five-point-seven range. Well, this may be an improvement over the original development plan, cuz it, uh, what I'm gonna take issue with is, is we. We're dropping seventy-one ERUs, but we already added a hundred-and-fifty because we added a hundred-and-twenty-five townhomes and another. So, we, 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 based on the increases that we've done, we're not, we're not. Are we really saving? Well, we saved seventy, but previous amendment, we added a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-thirty, so. I still can't see the overall improvement, the best interest. What I would like to see between the phases. Is, I, I'm, I'm just wondering what the density is in Phase Two and in Phase Four and in Phase Five and Phase Six. Because Phase Nine, the math is pretty simple to say that it's, it's some points between ten-point-five and eleven units an acre. Cuz it's twelve, it's, it's twelve uni, you know, it's not quite twelve, it's twelve point, if I remember the numbers right. It's about twelve-point-six acres for this adjustment, one-hundred-and-thirty-three units, not quite twelve units an acre. Twelve units an acre is fairly dense. Um, it, in our, in our book, in our, in our, uh, in our general plan, twelve units an acre is high-density. Not a medium density, it's not a medium-density area. It's a high-density area. Are we balancing the rest of Copper Rim? Are we balancing the rest of Copper Rim on the back of phase nine or is there a better way to do it? So like I said, I'm not completely opposed to looking, I, I'm, I'm with council member Whitelock. I don't wanna modify the balanced housing ordinance. I can modify the PC ordinance. We can talk about phases. We can talk about other things in the PC ordinance. But to, to make the modification on the balanced housing ordinance, I won't go down that road. So, uh, you, you know, so there's, there's a couple of my thoughts is that, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm willing to look. At, at creativity and compromises. You know, I look at the townhome depiction and the whole center section between all the townhomes is nothing but concrete. But this little white green space and it's so skinny that under the current landscape ordinance, it's gonna be rock. It's gon- it's not gonna be grass. It's not a usable space. Um, and so I think we need to become more creative. Um, I, I think you can look at some creativity, uh. And so that, that's where, that, that, that will just finish up my, my, my comments tonight.
I just wanted to add one more thing on the ordinance. I actually like the amendment to the ordinance, but I would take out. I don't know where is it right here? Oh, it's not on here. Shoot. I would say unless approved by the city council, period. Cause if you put in, because they found it in the best interest of the city, then somebody's gonna come to us and tell us what the best interest of the city is. And I'd rather let this, the council is gonna do what the council's gonna do. Hopefully we're always acting in the best interest of the city. Not always. But hopefully that's what our motives are. And. And so I would, I would, I like the amendment. I would just cut it off as. The council can change its mind on a particular parcel if it's convinced that that's a good idea for whatever reason. Don't, don't spell out to me what the reason should be, because then somebody's gonna come and play to that reason. I'd, I'd cut that part off.
Yeah, that was just a thought. And so there are other ways to deal with it as well. And one of those would be the one that, uh, the text amendment or the language that. Duncan suggested, so there are a number of ways to deal with that.
All right. I've got a couple more thoughts. Um. The more we talk. So I'm flashing back to about ten, was it ten years ago when this started? I think it was. Even in this same room where we had the initial conversations and sorry thing kinda drawn out, this is what we think we can do with copper. Was that ten or was that eleven years ago?
About eight years ago. It was right before I was elected the first time.
Is that right? Okay.
I was on the planning commission.
Okay, I was thinking it was further.
Went for a ride Brad Wilson's truck.
Um. There have been a few things that have changed. Um, obviously the commercial is part of that. Um. We had kind of anticipated that that might be something that would be up for a consideration to modify a little bit later. And there's a lot of. I, I don't wanna say wishful thinking, but a lot of hopes and dreams that were thrown out on the paper and we know that a lot of things have changed. Um, the way people view commercial, I mean, one of the thoughts that was running through my mind when we modified this was. The twenty to forty acre strip malls that we had so many of in the eighties and nineties, they just don't work today with a lot of online commerce. Um, unless the commercial retail is something of a destination, it just languishes. It doesn't really thrive over time. So I was okay with that modification. Um, we had anticipated that there would be some sort of multifamily element at the top of this. That would help make things pencil and we knew that that was integral to the project. Um. And I, I, I don't necessarily wanna see the senior element disappear, but I know that things have changed. Um, we also had the balanced housing ordinance to help us mitigate some of that change that was impacting. Some of the more established neighborhoods and trying to get the development in the places that we want. As we've had some conversation tonight, I'm wondering if we do wanna consider adding townhomes as an exemption. Just in the PC zone, maybe PC and PRD. Um. I, I would be open to have a conversation about modifying that element so that townhomes could be considered exempt. I don't know if that's a, if that's something I want to do, but I'd be, I'd be open to have a little bit more of a discussion specifically on that. As, as council member Green suggested, all the different elements all in one spot is one fell swoop. I, I think we're. Not ready for that. I think some of that's a little bit premature, but I very much appreciate the conversation. To, to bring to our attention the, the request and, and the need for the change. And I, I think that might be one way that we could address. What's being requested without opening up the floodgates to every other development to say, you know, we're gonna skip senior and we're just gonna go with something townhome. You guys have a large enough development where I think it could work for the benefit of the city as a whole. Um. But there's some other pieces, the, the, I, I'd be curious to see what that did to the percentages. I know we said we wanna stick to the eight, eighty-three to seventeen, but what we have right now shows that we'd be doubling. But if townhomes were included as exempt, what would that do to our balance? Do you know off the top of your head? Okay, I, I, I'd be, I'd be curious on that. Um. I'm not as concerned about the type of townhome. I'm like the, the width as was mentioned. Um, for work, I travel a fair amount and I get to see, like, spend a fair amount of time in Chicago and New York and you see those row houses that are incredibly narrow but super deep. Um, there's a lot of, uh, unique elements that you could add. I think that could bring some. Ju- ju- just sort of some different products to the market that you don't necessarily have the ability to do in other areas. I think that might actually become a draw. Personally, for me and my family, that would not bring us there, but I think it would for others. And as was mentioned, if you guys build and can't sell it, that's. Five kids, no, we'd need sevens, no, yeah, yeah. Five kids, seven stories at a minimum. And honestly, right now I prefer to each have their own house, so. But I, I'd be open to discussing the possibility of adding townhomes to exempt. Um, for the purpose of the balanced housing within the PC, possibly the PRD. Um, I, I'm, I'm curious if anyone else on the council wants to chime in now that we've heard everybody speak. Actually, before opening it up again for the rest of the council, are there additional comments, additional thoughts, additional? Uh, questions asking for more depth? You'd like anybody to elaborate on? It's.
See, that's, that's why I said I'm willing to, I'm willing to look at different ordinances besides modifying balanced housing. If that means that we look at ta- townhomes, percentage of townhomes in a PC zone. Uh, mo- modification of phases in a PC zone that allows integrated. I'm willing to look at other things besides just the wording of the balanced housing. So, uh, that, what I'm looking for is. Creativity that gives us the best product. At the, the lowest val- uh, the, at the, it shows there are some affordable houses in here. I really would like to see some houses that are set aside for affordable housing. Jones Ranch did it a, a few years ago. Uh, you know, I would like to see, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing the five percent met. Um, and, and, and I want you to think about that, five percent affordable housing. Um, set aside for first responders or schoolteachers or whatever the heck else. That may be one of the concessions that helps sell the city council on, on this, this transition. So. Uh, you know, those are the kinds of, I, 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 I just wanna be more. I just wanna be as creative as we can to get the best possible product so that. Um, we don't get a myriad of complaints, you know, ten years from now. Uh, you know, for whatever reason, so.
Sorry, I know council member Pac hit his light. One other thing I wanted to pull up, I didn't quite finish my thought. I'm not as concerned about the width of the townhomes, but I'm very much concerned about what that would do for parking. I wanna make sure that whatever we do, the design of the development doesn't push or encourage folks parking out on public streets. Where we're gonna have issues with snowplows. Um, or i- if we do have younger families, you're gonna have a lot of kids there. Um. Wanna make sure that parking is given very special consideration because we've, we've got a ways to go for tracks and other transportation. Sorry, council member Pac, you had your, uh.
No problem, Chair. Thank you very much. You were just wanting to understand the thoughts of the council to try to encapsulate this, uh, lengthy conversation. So I just wanted to, to help out and hopefully help staff and the developer as well. So I, I would like to see a bit of the senior housing overlay still there or something for seniors, something for. The idea of having different price points, different. Age groups, being able, eating, shopping, being able to, to, to be together. There's a lot of benefit in that. The lower density for increased, uh, single family homes, that's palatable to most people. Um, the, the idea there though, that it's always, so you, you can't please all the people all the time, right? And if you try, well, that's impossible. But there's gotta be that balance of where is it actually going to be affordable. Very aptly stated, council member Jacob, that next year it's gonna be fifty thousand more. Unless there's some major shift in the market. So we've gotta do something so that our seniors have a place to live and that starter families. People in their mid twenties can actually find a place to reside in West Jordan. And that's not gonna be on a quarter acre lot at, uh, today's market prices. So I like the idea of what's happening here where it's a mix of all of these concerns, trying to be brought together. Trying to work and play well. So I, I'd be in favor of continuing that where we have. All of those different price points and the housing options.
All right, and I. I was curious about the same thing with this type of project. So, um. Our home builder, Sega Homes, uh, Spencer Corbridge, who's sitting right behind me. Um, the daybreak urban towns, what Sega did was they performed a buyer's study. On fifty-eight buyers of the sixty-two homes there. And that product was intended to be attainable. You know, released in the low threes to the high threes by the time it completed in terms of base price. And what they found was in terms of the buyer type, a really wide cross section of buyers, all the way from first time home buyers to, you know. People in their twenties to, uh, dual income to a pretty healthy percentage of fifty-five and over. So kinda something for everyone. As opposed to what we thought was gonna be mostly, you know, at least ninety percent first time buyer. It was actually all ages. It's interesting. So I think that was the other part of trying to crack the nut with. Hundred and thirty-three attainable units here that are towns, knowing that. We'd get a, a, a certain percentage of those, whatever that percentage is, that would be fifty-five and over. Just driven from the market.
Thank you. And then help me understand then the correlation because it seems like whether you're early twenties or early sixties. You're an empty nester. And the older community in general doesn't want to have to maintain a lot of yard. Younger. And younger, younger residents don't have the money in general for a larger place. So wouldn't, wouldn't that offset? Early twenties retirees, I mean, granted, it's a thing, it's a senior housing overlay. But let's just say hypothetically, if that weren't there, the price point would be basically the same, right? For, for a plenty something trying to get their, their first home. So why, why wouldn't that price work then? Could help me understand that, cause we don't have a, a large inventory of council member, um. Council member Warden mentioned, it'd be nice to have an option for our seniors. And to my knowledge, the few developments we have for seniors are. Are occupied. So you're saying that there's not a demographic that would be able to. Absorb the, the units that you have. Everybody's always getting older, but it just seems like we want people to stay here.
If we're back to talking about the age restricted two hundred and four unit project that were apartments. Um, you know, come back to, to your comment, which is, you know, uh. Most people that are retired, you know, they're not gonna be able to afford three to four thousand dollars a month for a rental payment. Well, at this site. Much, much lower than that. So you don't get enough revenue to offset the costs. And there's only a certain pool of people that can, can, that have qualified for that. So your absorptions are so, so slow that you end up in a ten year project. And, and in this tight lending environment, any lending environment, quite frankly, who's gonna finance that project? The answer is no one. So the workaround was a hundred and thirty-three towns that appeals to all ages at a lower price point.
How, how many sixty-year-olds really want four stories? I'm sorry, but over fifty-five are not going to be. That, that is not gonna be their desire.
They're doing it at daybreak. Let's say it's five percent of the buyers. They're, they're buying them a daybreak and they sold it six units per month.
I get, oh, why, why is it gonna be three to four thousand dollars to rent an apartment? I don't know anybody that pays that much. I mean, twenty-five hundred, but up to four grand. I mean. What do you lie on them with gold?
I tell you, nobody's gonna buy the house and then go, oh, shoot, I can't make it up the stairs. You don't, you don't have to worry about that. If they're sixty-five years old and they can't make it up the stairs, they're not.
So the other thing that I appreciate is the. I also appreciate that it's, this was being looked at as a rental project for senior housing. Instead of saying, well, just take away the senior housing, we'll just do regular multifamily and just open it up to everybody without the age restriction. I really appreciate that you did not take that approach. Um, I'm thinking about. Let me double check, make sure my mom's not online. She's not. Um, she, she chimes in most every night. Um, but in her scenario, she's got a home that's paid off. I can't imagine, I, I, and. I know a lot of the seniors who are in here, are in our city, are in that similar situation. Trying to get a rental product in this particular location in the city, like downtown might be a little bit different, daybreak might be a little different. Here, I, I think that might be a, a little more difficult, but having a product that's actually owned as opposed to rented. Um, I, I really think you're going the right route and if. If it would be helpful to have conversations about the eligibility of townhomes. Um, in PC zones, I, I'd be open to have that conversation, like I said. Anything else on item two, discussion item two, before we move on to discussion item three? Anything on your side? Okay.
Let's watch this sort through.
All right.
We'll get it. Okay, um, item three, these are just a couple of, uh, small items. Um, just that the ring road on the right side in phase nine. Uh, is, is just been replaced with a private drive. There's some topographic issues that are right up against the. The Mountain D corridor, it's pretty steep, uh, plus the proximity to, uh, of that ring road that's. The two mountain D quarters, those just too close. So with the. With just the concept drawing this in front of you, this is the one in the middle, uh, that has been moved over so you don't have quite the grade. Um, and you can work those, the townhomes into that, uh, site without disturbing that hillside too much. But it's been moved further to the east and it would be a private drive. So that was just, uh. Something, uh, just to take a look at. Um. Yeah. And then, uh.
Oh, so the north south still remains public. It's just the angled.
Just the interior road.
So yeah, basically what you're saying is that road that's labeled in the center five point four percent grade, that becomes a private road.
Right.
And we don't have to maintain it. Sold.
I, I also wonder if that might help with parking because if that's a private road and not a city road. Then if it pertains to an HOA, would the HOA be able to help regulate with parking and concerns that may come up for those who are on that, on that road? However, I would wanna make sure they didn't get pushed to the public road to the east or on seventieth.
You're gonna have Stumm Street.
Please.
Sorry, so the concept of the previous public exterior loop road is. Because of the steep topography, to build that road, it'll completely devastate the natural topography. So the idea was to just take the same loop road, push it uphill, reduce the, the road platform, make it narrower. With, with the concept to sit and blend the project more naturally into the existing topography. And also to make that loop road private. So it's one less road for the city to maintain and, and operate.
Yeah, I, I think you're, you're still gonna have parking on seventieth regardless. That's why seventieth has gotta be wide enough. Because the front of those houses face seventieth, so your guests are gonna park there. Look, drive up a, a hundred and fourth or daybreak Parkway from. Bangator going up the hill, there's cars parked on the side because it's the same thing. It's, it's townhomes with nice front yards that face the street. They don't have, they're alley loaded, so they don't have the, uh, the parking in front. So when grandpa comes over.
They don't have, they're alley loaded, so they don't have the uh the parking in front. So when grandpa comes over and
Townhouses I live in are that exactly.
Yeah, where you live. Yep, exactly. You're gonna have parking on the street. You just are. It's you just are. I do like that in the middle of this, there's a lot of extra parking spaces, though. That's something that a a lot of developers tend to leave out, so I I'm I'm pleased to see that.
I'm not seeing anybody express a significant amount of heartburn on this. Any other questions on this one? All right, discussion item four.
One more, Alan. This is, this is pretty minor and it's something that we'll be working on, but the original um, development plan showed as part of eight, uh Phase Eight, just pedestrian connection over to the school access road on Falcon Ridge Elementary. And this would be a uh a public street connection to the school access road, but as of right now, the school access road is just an access road on by the school district, so that would have to be worked through. There would have a number of things that have to happen. That street would be dedicated. I don't know if you got anything to add.
We're having a real hard time hearing you, Ray.
Oh, okay.
It's just
It's lame. Go ahead.
So I could jump in on that one. So I got the comments yesterday on that. I wasn't even aware of that. So in talking to the land planner and civil engineer, I think with benefit of the doubt, I think what they were trying to do was create a loop road situation and inadvertently removed the pedestrian connection. So we're happy to add it back in and lose the whole public private road connection and add that pedestrian connection back in for Phase Eight.
As long as there's plenty of speed bumps in front of them behind, right?
Well, I'm I'm confused. The houses on the east side of Phase Eight that face the school, right? Because those are, are those alley loaded houses? Or look like
That's correct.
But they face the school, but they wouldn't have a road in front of their homes, is that? Right?
There, there is.
There is a road in front of those homes. It's the Jordan School District access road.
So not a road that they can use in front of their homes? So so the aforementioned father-in-law who comes over to visit or or
Actually, that's incorrect. So part of Phase Eight, um, we'll have to widen that school access road on the the portion that's uh over, you know, to the west and over the property line. So there will be a frontage road, which will be shared between the elementary school and Phase Eight.
So that eliminates this whole question, then. Now you're not having a pedestrian connection or a public private, you got a road in a road. It would connect in with the road on the north side of Phase Five. Right, yeah, connecting with the road on the north side of Phase Five. Yeah, that makes sense, but then it's a road. So the school access road becomes a moot point at this point. It's not a school access road anymore. It's a road.
Has Jordan School District been contacted about this? Have you had conversations with them?
Yeah, it seems to me like the school district's gonna wanna deed half the road over to the city or whatever.
Is the developer know? The answer is no.
I I think we're being asked a question before the question's even been properly formulated at this point.
But if if in your plan, you're planning on putting a road and you haven't talked to the landowner, that seems like a problem. Right, but he's putting a a little bit of his land in a road, but counting on using the school districts.
Their facilities department's aware of it. There's also a road in Phase Eight, north of the road that Ray's referring to, that Inter MDA connects to the Jordan School District Road. That was approved as part of the twenty eighteen MDA.
I I just hope the school district approves it and their elected body.
We'll sort through that.
Again, not seeing any significant heartburn.
I was just gonna say, the only thing I wanna make sure of is we don't have to acquire any property. So as long as, as long as we're not acquiring property and the city's not spending money on property. I'd what I'm gonna tell you is I don't see you, you, this, this was an application with a bunch of major things, right? The the was major modifications. I'm not sure I see this as a major modification that, you know, it probably gonna be eventually in a modified MDA, but I don't see that as major. That, you know, the other one I don't see as major, the the townhome Phase Nine is the major one.
Okay, anything else on this question for council?
So council, sorry, before you go off of this, then talking about the m- major modification here. I'm a little unclear. Is there a majority of the council willing to consider townhomes in the PC, yeah, as an exemption to the balanced housing ordinance in a PC or PRD zone? I heard that men feeling battered about, I'm not sure where that landed. Just because that's a critical point, I'm wondering for the clarity for the developer and clarity for staff.
I think what you heard was that there were at least a couple of us that said we were willing to have that discussion, which is enough to put it on an agenda, but we didn't have, I don't think you had, we didn't take any vote votes. There's no clear, there's no clear direction on. I'm gonna tell you, there was no clear direction based on my perception of what we wanna do with Phase Nine. We've talked about potential modifications. I think that uh based on what everybody's heard tonight, there can be some further discussions with staff and the developer to say, what do you think will, based on what we heard, what do you think will fit? And and give you a better perspective. But there was no clear direction. I mean, there's a couple of us that said, yes, we were willing to talk about townhomes as an exemption to the balanced housing ordinance. But where we didn't say draft the, draft a uh, I mean, there's, there's a discussion about the pros and cons of opening up the balanced housing for with townhomes and, you know, size of townhomes, number of buildings, how many can be connected, yada, yada, yada. Those are the kind of discussions that if we wanna have those, we can, we can maybe make some cohesive recommendations, but there was no, there was nothing anywhere close to that.
Yeah, similar. I didn't hear four people saying, please go bring this back. However, there were a couple of voices saying, if this is something helpful to the developer, there's at least two that would be open to discussion. And having that added to a a work session, so if if that's helpful, if it's not helpful, then then they don't need to bring it. So. You look like you wanna ask further or push a little bit more.
Well, knowing where, knowing that there's two, at least two that wanna discuss it further, I guess we'll bring it back at a work session.
To discuss it further.
Yeah, open to discussing it further. I I I get the, well, no yet, right? And the devil's in the details. But if there's enough to bring up, bring that part of the discussion back for a work session, it sounds like that's what we'll we'll aim.
Go back to uh discussion item number one. Uh, with the questions. Does the council support replacing two hundred and four senior dwelling units with one thirty three market townhomes? If yes. So the question is, i- i- if you want us to answer that question, we can take a vote. Does the council support replacing two hundred and forty senior dwelling units with one thirty three? We can, we can, we can take a vote and we can say, and and if the answer to that is yes, then we can say how we wanna do it. Is that, would that provide you more clarification?
Well, I'm I'm looking at the developers as well. The worst thing is coming out, having had this discussion and not being clear where to go next.
So completely agree. Um, I'd love to get some more clarity. I was hoping to take a read on our proposal. If we, if we, um, if it's a no, then we'll come back with something else.
Yes.
So I will, I'm trying to think about how does the what, I I I I move that we ask the question, we vote yes or no. And we can, we can do that with a a yes or a no vote. We vote, I move that we vote on whether or not we support replacing the two hundred and four senior dwelling units with a hundred and three market rate towns homes as proposed in our packet. We can take votes to provide clarity.
We can't take, we can't take formal action.
Take formal action.
We can vote to give direction.
What I'm saying is that we vote yes or no to support replacing two hundred and four senior dwelling units with a hundred and three market rate townhomes.
I I'll second it, so you can have the vote.
Okay.
So so this is the motion to vote on whether or not we want to vote on this? Okay, no, 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 the 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 the, no, the motion is to vote yes or no. When when we take the vote, we take either a yes note or a no note to support replacing two hundred and four senior dwelling units with a hundred and three market retail. We'll vote yes or no.
As presented in the packet.
As presented in the packet.
So let's start and uh go down. All right, so that wasn't on mic, but Councilmember Worthen said no.
No. No, as is presented.
No, as presented in the packet.
As presented, no.
As presented, no, but I want further discussion.
Yeah, since it's discussion to the motion, I don't wanna be locked into two oh four and one thirty three. I'd love to continue collaborating and continue the discussion.
Not that it matters at this point, but yes.
All right, so second vote uh would be would you be open to council discussion about adding townhomes as an exempt housing type for PC? So let's
No.
Okay, council, white, white, so we have two no, one yes, I'm yes. This is discussion, okay.
Yes, on discussion, I'm always happy to discuss pros and cons, recognizing there all of us have blind spots. Let's discuss.
And a yes, so five in favor, two oppose.
But it is kind of a moot point because we said no to the first one.
Well, we said as as presented in the packet.
Right.
And as presented in the packet was
I'm just saying that if yes is no longer a condition that has been met.
Yeah, sometimes the questions are overly specific, sometimes they're overly vague. They are rarely rarely dead on, so it's nice being in a work session where we can kind of push and modify and just sort of roll with things as they come up. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. That was helpful.
All right, so we were on question number seven, eight, twelve? Was that, was that all the questions?
We're done.
I thought there was a question about the timing of the phases, or was that just the street?
That was, I mean, I had a question about how this timing relates to what's happening with Seventy East South writ large, right? So anyway, that was, that was my idea, just throwing it out there, but my my question was if, well, it wasn't really a question, it's more of a suggestion. If if this is gonna be, if this Phase Nine is gonna be developed sooner than later, especially before the school district decides to build something next to the elementary school, we need to make sure Seventy East South is to a point to handle this, is what I'm saying. And not according to some traffic study, but according to what the people who live there will feel, not what the traffic study says, but what it's actually gonna impact people.
All right, I'm not seeing any other lights on. Did you have anything else to add? Ray, I know you'd only asked for about ten minutes worth of feedback in the request for council action, but uh
The grand scheme of things.
Ray, thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to discussion item B, which is discussion on transportation topics. Mr. Lee, oh. What about trails? Double decker? What about tunnels? All right.
Council, uh, on transportation projects, uh, transportation, uh, these are just discussion items. Um, we have two kinda F R I topics tonight. One, uh, Jamie and Brian are uh moving to the front to talk about Ninety South, Deckridge Way. There were questions at the last council meeting about, um, I know our questions from residents and council members about timeline, chronology. Where are we at in the decision-making process now? Um, where, where, where are future decision points? Uh, so uh Jamie and Brian will walk through that. They have a handout um that we can share as well. And then after that discussion, uh, we just wanna make you aware of um some updated uh Supreme Court decisions regarding transportation utility fees and um kind of revenue options cities have before then going forward.
Yeah, and I do wanna preface this, letting uh letting folks know that we do have a number of folks from the neighborhood that would be impacted that are here. We also have about a dozen that are also online, listening on Zoom. Um, and I'm sure we'll have some others listening later, so. We don't have a citizen comment time uh this evening, but we did have citizen comments last time. I saw that they were quickly taking notes to get as many answers in as possible. And if there are still remaining questions that aren't brought up in the meeting, uh, they're typically happy to meet one-on-one to answer any remaining questions. So um if you do have questions, be sure to get your contact information to them. With that, Jamie, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the City Council, as you well know, based on feedback from their citizenry. Even in recent times, as as recent as the summer, transportation is at the forefront of many concerns that our residents have relative to the city and its future and its sustainability and livability as a community. We as uh staff take that charge and take that responsibility very seriously and have taken that responsibility seriously for many, many years. Um, we have a dedicated engineering team that is constantly mindful and uh monitoring transportation throughout the city. We even have a transportation engineer, uh, Mr. Nestor Gallo, who's here and is uh with us here tonight, is our uh city transportation engineer, and he works in cooperation with our city engineer and of course, your public works director, Brian Clegg, who's seated to my right. Transportation is obviously a big part of the future of the state of Utah and specifically West Jordan. Part of the conversation that we have recently been having relates to the future of the Ninety East South corridor and connectivity, specifically east-west connectivity. You recall back in the latter part of the nineteen nineties, there was great efforts made to um, build and develop north-south transportation connectivity. And that led to the expansion of the I fifteen corridor in advance of the two thousand and two Winter Olympics. And obviously greatly enhanced mobility from a north-south basis at that time. Right around that same time, there then began conversations relative to east-west connectivity. And you started to see some significant movement in terms of improvements to east-west corridors and consideration of future corridors that would enhance east-west commu- uh, transportation as our state continued to grow. West Jordan was a big part of those conversations and um I have kind of prepared in cooperation with staff, and I express appreciation to Nestor and and Laurie from our engineering staff, Tony and Marie from our communication staff, who helped in the preparation of some of these materials. But back as early as nineteen ninety eight, the city engaged in dialogue relative to the future of east-west transportation in the city of West Jordan. What you have seen on your monitor, and I have paper copies that I'd be happy to distribute to those that are here in attendance, as well as you personally, is a breakdown as to where we were and where we are now relative to east-west connectivity in the city of West Jordan. And like I noted, it goes back to approximately nineteen ninety eight, when as part of the city's master transportation plan, for the first time in earnest, we sincerely began addressing transportation uh concerns along the Ninety East South corridor. And at that point, we designated as a city, Ninety East South as a primary east-west transportation corridor. And uh for the first time, as part of that transportation master plan, we deviated from the New Brigham Highway as being that uh primary east-west uh connection and moved to more of a grid-type system, which is prevalent in and around Salt Lake County. And moved to more of a grid-type system, which is prevalent in and around Salt Lake County as a whole. That, uh, mindset was also obviously incorporated. In, um, more recent transportation master plans, specifically when our plan was updated in two thousand and three. There was a additional update made in two thousand and six, a full redo of our transportation master plan in two thousand and eight. And of course, in two thousand and fifteen, we also did a complete overhaul of our master transportation plan. As you are well aware, we are currently in process of updating that master transportation plan once again. And we have hired third-party consultants who are, uh, experts and technical, um. Uh, I guess you could tech- technical experts in transportation to help us with that effort. It was right around that same time we began to have conversations about east-west connectivity. That our regional and our state partners also took upon themselves the rest, the responsibility. Of documenting future east-west connectivity as well. So you will see from the timeline there that, uh, the Wausatch Front Regional Council, it serves. As our municipal planning organization that tends to regional transportation needs. Included, uh, a Ninety East Sa- or Ninety East South alignment as part of its grid alignment that was first adopted. By the Wausatch Front Regional Council in two thousand and seven. Moreover, the Utah Department of Transportation, UDOT, also included Ninety East South. And that grid alignment as part of its unified transportation plan in two thousand and seventy, in seven. I note those because even previous to the incorporation of. The Ninety East South alignment within the Wausatch Front Plan or the State Unified Plan. The city was actually also thinking proactively as to the future of that corridor. When we entered into reimbursement agreements with a number of developers along the future Ninety East South corridor. I've just specifically noted two, uh, two developments that were impacted by those agreements. There were specifically reimbursement agreements where the city agreed to reimburse the developer for system improvements. That were made along the future Ninety East South corridor. And specifically the Copperfield subdivision and the Duck Creek subdivision, we entered into. Uh, reimbursement agreements with developers associated with those projects to actually add. Writhes to the Ninety East South corridor adjacent to our particular projects. Thereafter, uh, we continued down this path of northwest, uh, excuse me, east-west connectivity. And have made the Ninety East South extension part of the city's plans. Back in, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, we recognized based on actions taken. By both the Planning Commission and the City Council relative to growth and development that was happening on the west side of the community. We, uh, cooperated with UDOT in the, um. Essentially, the development of a plan to extend the Ninety East South corridor specifically from sixty-four hundred west. To U one eleven, the Bacchus Highway. And with the help of our, uh, state partner, UDOT, we received, uh, ten million dollars to help facilitate. Construction and engineering design of that roadway. That specific project, we entered into a reimbursement agreement with UDOT. And we are now working with private development partners in the construction of that roadway from sixty-four hundred west to U one eleven. So, uh, that project and process is already underway. We also, um, have entered into, uh, another, uh, agreement to enhance. East-west transportation with UDOT, once again, not only the Ninety East South corridor, but the eighty-six hundred south corridor. And that project, while we have yet to commence the project, is also one that we will actively pursue in the, in the future. Based on funding that UDOT has made available to us and a similar reimbursement agreement that we have entered into with UDOT. Uh, for expansion of that corridor to the west. At the time we entered into this two thousand and twenty-two agreement with UDOT. We recognized that there would be a gap in the future connectivity of Ninety East South. From the Mountain View corridor, obviously to approximately Duck Ridge Way. We hired a consultant, this was the city acting in cooperation with the Wausatch Front Regional Council. To conduct a very high-altitude review and study of potential options relative to. The connection of Ninety East South at Duck Ridge as well as the New Bingham Highway. This is not a boots-on-the-ground type of assessment, but rather a ten-thousand-foot assessment. To help us better plan and anticipate a process in the future that would. Uh, specifically lead to recommended improvements along this corridor. At the intersection of New Bingham Highway and Duck Ridge Way. We, uh, have recently received the results of the study and I have made. That study available to you and you should have it in your inbox. Uh, this was the earliest time we had based on council agendas and committee of the whole meetings to make this presentation to you. And we're happy to have that conversation with you. My intent in visiting with you today is not to review out of the specifics. Of the wall consultant group and their study, but to provide you with a copy. And to, uh, suggest to you that you review the suggestions and recommendations in detail. In anticipation of what we know will be an environmental process in the future. To, uh, connect Ninety East South from the Mountain View corridor to sixty-four hundred west. We are frankly, at this point in our conversation, relative to the connectivity. Of Ninety East South from Mountain View corridor to sixty-four hundred west, we are not at a decision point. The decision as to connectivity will happen once a, uh, funding has been garnered. For expansion of the roadway and the required environmental impact process has been completed. And that is something that we would initiate, uh, probably as, uh, optimistic as I can be. Uh, beginning in twenty twenty-six, probably later than that. We would anticipate that the environmental process would probably run twelve to eighteen months at that point. Then a, uh, what they call a record of decision suggesting a proposed alignment and connection would be made. And thereafter, construction of whatever recommended improvements are made would take place. So in best-case scenario, we were talking about an environmental process that would begin in twenty twenty-six. And, uh, probably complete and have a ribbon cut on a new piece of this roadway. In twenty twenty-nine or twenty, twenty-thirty. Uh, now, I am suggesting to you a timeline that is more aggressive than what the Wausatch Front. Regional Council has identified as part of their regional plan. But is based on what UDOT and others anticipate to be the need and demand. Sooner than what Wausatch Front Regional Council has planned. So this is where we are with this analysis and process. That we have undertaken in recent months. We recognize that there are many questions associated with the, um, analysis. And, uh, many of those questions were the result of healthy citizen feedback and engagement in the process. As a result, we have subsequently retained the services of the same consultant to further evaluate. The corridor and alternatives based on, for example, not extending. The Ninety East South corridor in the way that has been envisioned for the last twenty-five years. As essentially a east-west arterial from the city's eastern border all the way up to U one eleven and even potentially beyond. So what you have in front of you on your screen is that specific chronological breakdown as to where we have been. And where we are today. There are also a series of frequently asked questions that have been loaded onto. The Ninety East South Transportation Corridor Study website. That detail and answer questions relative to pedestrian crossings, speed limits along the proposed corridor. Uh, whether consideration can be extended to, uh, focus the primary alignment. Of, uh, a road on New Bingham as compared to Ninety East South. Potential transfer, or potential traffic congestion concerns along Duck Ridge Way. All of these conversations are included in the FAQ and are available to. Uh, individuals who are interested in learning more about this program. Uh, tomorrow I will have the, uh, the technical consulting group load. The study onto the project website, so it will be available for, uh, public review and distribution. I just wanted you to have a little bit of an advanced, uh, uh, review of the. Of the technical memo in anticipation that you might pick questions and concerns relative to what has been prepared. There is a lot of information in this study. It is detailed information. I don't think, obviously, you've had time to digest the detailed information as of yet. Nestor is here and available, uh, and is more than willing in the future to engage. In a very detailed discussion about what is found in the study. We're also very happy to connect. Uh, the city and you as, as the city's governing body with the law consulting, consultant group that completed this study. Um, but for tonight, the purpose in me visiting with you is to provide an update as to where we are today with the study. And to advise you also that we are not at a point. In, uh, making final decisions relative to the alignment of the corridor, but rather that opportunity will come. By way of a very public process in, um, a number of years as part of an envi- a required environmental impact process. So I don't know if there are specific questions that you have, but Brian and I and, or Nestor would be willing to entertain them if you have them.
I haven't had a chance to see that email yet. When was it sent?
It was sent this morning.
Okay, that would be why.
Jamie, what's the, what's the website real quick with the FAQs? Sorry. I just, before I just filled questions, I wanted to see if they were already answered.
I, I don't have the website right in front of me, I can.
I was, I was trying to find it on our city website and I just don't even know where to start looking, so.
I found a UDOT website, but it's.
That's, that's the, that's the freeway area.
Yeah, I can get that, uh, I can get that for you.
While you're pulling it up, the study that you mentioned, it sounded like the question asked of the consulting group was. How do we update the connectivity between, um. Ninety and U one eleven and New Bingham, rather than should, was the question, how do we or was it should we?
No, the, the specific, I mean, I guess the specific scope of the study was to. Um, look at the entire corridor from Ninety East South, uh, along Ninety East South from the Mountain View corridor to the Bacchus Highway. With obviously specific emphasis on, uh, connectivity at Duck Ridge Way and New Bingham Highway. Let me see if I can get that website for you.
Pamela, you're up first.
Sorry, I can't, first off, I wanna say thank you for that study. I haven't gone through it all yet, but I appreciate it and I look forward to once getting through it. Then knowing what questions to ask, so thank you for that. That's what I wanna say.
So, I, 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 I'm gonna ask the rhetorical question. Why are we talking about this? First off, we're in the prelimi- I, I, and that was my rhetorical question and I'm gonna answer myself. Well, okay, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna further el- uh, uh, elaborate then. This is a preliminary phase. Council in this form of government has three statutory responsibilities. One, review municipal administration. Two, write policy. Three, fund. We have the purse strings. We're not anywhere close, we're, we're not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, yes, use the pun, but we're way outside our lane. We're, we're, we're on northbound I fifteen headed southbound. Because this, this kind of information, well, this kind of project belongs. To the executive branch. It's their responsibility to work through it. There will be points in time where they're gonna ask us to look at safety enhancements or look at what residents want. Or those kind of things, and we're gonna have to make the decisions. Whether we not, whether or not we wanna put nice graphics on a bridge, bridge, I gotta, I gotta throw that in, Brian, on U one eleven. But we, you know, we're sound walls on Ninety East South, never mind, I'm not going there, uh, but. We're not anywhere point, but we're, 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 we're even close to, to funding stuff. We haven't even, yeah, you know, you're talking about consulting group, looking at alternatives, those kind of things. Uh, those, i- it's, it's, this is so premature that this, this belongs to you guys. And I'm not sure why we're, why we're talking about this because this, you know, like you said, it's been on there twenty-five years. Um, we're, 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 we're proceeding with the way we think we ought to proceed, but that's a decision. Uh, that's a, you know, that's a, those are, those are the kind of decisions that belong to the executive branch. If you wanna make the analogy, um, Utah Legislature doesn't get into, uh. I mean, how many times is Utah Legislature actually got in the middle of a road project? I can think of one, uh, thank you, legacy Parkway, uh. But, uh, the, the, Utah legislate, you know, just, so by analogy, we're the same way. UDOT, UDOT works on projects, our transportation department works on projects. Uh, at some point in time, we will be involved to, uh, to, to, to pay for funding and those kind of things, so. You know, and, and really, we've gotta look at this, and I'm, I'm gonna throw this out. One of the, one of the top priorities, and, and I think we have to proceed on this. As we talk about our survey that we conducted earlier this year. One of the top ten answers on the board was east-west transportation. And so we, we've got to, we've, you know, that's, that we have to look at east-west transportation. And the other thing that, as, as I've done the research on this project, and, and I know people don't. Wanna hear this, but whether the city's involved with it or not, if you don't wants to put that road through, they will. Because they own all the property. They own, they own all the property from where Ninety East South touches New Bingham Highway to all the way through. Uh, to, that, you know, to where it would connect to Duck, Duck Ridge, that's either in New Bingham Highway right away. Or they own the piece of property outright. They bought a piece of property just west of the, the mental health facility at Rivendale. To complete the package to buy the property. They are, UDOT owns the property, so what we, what we probably have to consider. Is that there may be, and, and, and I know people don't like to hear this, but. There may be the inevitability of that road going through. Now, there may not be if the study comes back with a good alternative. Um, our goal at, at some point in time is to, i- is to, um, engage the, the, the residents of the area. And make sure that the, the road has the safety and connectivity pieces we need. Uh, but if, if the idea of this, this council, if the idea is to put this on the agenda. Was for the council to say, we're gonna kill the, the, the Ninety East South project, I'd say that we're. Uh, either one, we're way too late in the process, cause we started it. Or we're way too early in the process and we're premature, cause we're not even to the point where we're, um, ready to authorize a dollar to buy the shovel. So that's, that's, those are my thoughts.
I hate to say, you know, the, the facts are the facts, you know, I mean, he's not lying, only saying that, you know, if you don't want. He's not lying. He's saying that, you know, if you don't want it to go through, it's going to go through. But it's our job to listen to our constituents. It's our job to try to have conversations of how to make things safer, how to. And I mean, I come from the Sycamores, which I mean, that's where a lot of my involvement came in. And Melissa Johnson at the time was the mayor and we were an island out there. We weren't, you know, we had Bacchus Highway that are, and I'm not joking you, I personally saw kids playing chicken trying to get across that road to get school. And it was it was pretty scary. And so we worked together as a community and we came up with ideas and that's what we need from you. You live there. I lived at the Sycamores and, you know, I worked with my neighbors and we came with ideas and thoughts and not pitchforks and and shovels and things like that. And that's really what we need are ideas. And one idea actually that I was talking to Alan earlier is, you know, we we did come up with the idea to have that sidewalk, the over, what do you call that? Skywalk that's over Bacchus. And that came from Brian, do you remember it? It was forty one in Bangor?
When Bangor put the.
Yeah, it was like forty one in Bangor. So I mean, it it still cost money, but it was a lot less because it was something and maybe that's some ideas that we can kind of keep in mind or some things we did out in the Sycamores. We can try to keep your kids safe by going over like we we have this stuff right down the road here in Redwood. I hate to say it's it is what it is because there could be changes with this study and we haven't had, I mean, it came at eleven AM this morning. Do look at the sixty something pages of it. But yeah, we're here to work with you to come up with ideas of, let's just say worst case scenario, it's going through. What are ways that we can look at keeping it safe? Is it putting a skywalk over to do something like that? What are some other things? I'm not a traffic engineer. I also don't live in your neighborhood. So, you know, maybe talk about some of those ideas, you know, talk with Brian and staff and say, hey, are these things possible? Because they're not possible if nobody says anything. And that's what we are here for is to listen. So I am going to put my two cents in and possibly looking at something like that if that's the worst case scenario. Always better to play devil's advocate, right?
If I may, just in response to Councilmember Worthing's comments, as a city, our role and focus is to build and maintain neighborhoods and to help them thrive. U dot is not in the business of building neighborhoods. They're in the business of building roads. And so the intent and purpose in commissioning this study was to prepare ourselves for the discussions that will happen in the future with U dot. And to your point and to Councilmember Green's point, we believe it's more beneficial for us to be involved in the conversation and try to positively impact and affect the outcome with all the information that we can collect as part of this process than to be on our heels, so to speak, when you not unilaterally in in a way makes the decision that we're going to do this. Because their focus is much different. Now, they are a partner and we value that partnership. But their focus and their mission is significantly different than ours. And so we want to make sure that the needs and concerns of neighborhoods and the city as a whole is considered when we look to the future of the Ninety South Corridor.
So just a reminder to staff. You really can't expect us to read things on the day of council meeting. So while we appreciate getting the items, we all have things that we do besides council meeting and reading a sixty nine page document just isn't going to happen for most of us if it's sent the day of. Appreciate it and we will review it in depth now, but I just really have a question. Because what if that road doesn't go through? There's already like a road in between there. It's just not used as a road. So what happens to that property? And Brian, what's under that road that?
Under the current road, the piece that's not connected yet?
Yeah.
A little pathway, right?
Yeah. One thing we need to consider too is on the current corridor where Ninety South is supposed to go, we've got to put utilities in there. So regardless, we've got to have a road in there for utilities.
Is there anything in there currently?
Yes, yeah, there is. On on the finished piece up above to the west. I don't think there's anything in the corridor right now.
So the section between the neighborhood.
That is no road on it right now. That's how the neighborhoods are being fed with some water.
If you're talking that mic, then I'll hear what you said.
Sorry, there are actually sewer improvements in the area that is not built up as a road right now. There are water improvements and there are storm drains. That is how both the Duck Creek area and the Copperfield area are serviced by the city. So the
Okay.
The utilities actually go straight through even though the road did not.
Okay. Okay, so if the road alignment was changed, what happens to that property in between those neighborhoods? It's a pretty big piece of property.
Well, there's a there's a process that we would go through potentially to surplus that property. We would need to keep the necessary easements that allow us access to the to the utilities. But depending on who owns the who who we purchased or who owns the property, there would be a specific proper out process outlined to surplus the property. At at the same time, there would probably still remain a need for neighborhood connectivity. And so I don't anticipate that that road would completely disappear in the future. But rather the nature of the road would change. With that said, as you look at the study and you look at future development west of the city, we're talking about thousands of residential units that are anticipated in and around that corridor. I'm quite confident that we are going to need to a greater degree that grid system that I talked about more tomorrow than we have ever needed it before. So I I think it would remain staff's recommendation that we do what we can to maintain that grid system with, you know, a series of east ray west roads that maintain connectivity all the way up to the Bacchus Highway. That is what we have done with seventy eight hundred South, for example. And you are very familiar, I'm sure, with some of the bottlenecks that we are experiencing along Seventy Eighth South. We're very sensitive to that and we don't want second verse same as the first.
You already have that. Nine thousand already.
Yeah, so we're trying to do what we can to mitigate those issues so that we don't have repeats of what has happened in the past.
Thank you.
I love seventy hundred South. So.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. Go ahead.
So.
I didn't see actually his light. I was looking at hers.
So fir- first of all, to answer the re- respond to the rhetorical question about why this is coming up, number of residents brought it up with concerns. And as I think about it, this is part of the transportation master plan, which is a subset of the general plan, which ultimately the council has to sign off on. As the neighborhood had some conversations, it was pointed out that that plan has shifted over time and what was originally anticipated when some of the first subdivisions were built doesn't necessarily match with what's on the current master plan. And if that's an oversight, then that's something where the council may need or may have the ability to say, perhaps we want to reconsider or 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 think about this. That said, as Councilmember Green mentioned, we we do have sometime, there's nothing urgent. There are a couple of different things. So I'm sharing my screen now and in a prior conversation, it was kind of clarified that there are actually two different projects. The first project is the connection of Ninety South from right here at sixty four hundred West over to U one eleven. This one right here is the one that's been funded by the state legislature to continue this from here over to U one eleven. I don't, I I know I've heard a couple of folks who prefer to not see that happen, but that's not where I've heard the majority of the concern. Majority of the concern that I've heard is right around this intersection right here and potential realignment. What we've understood is that there's a desire from U dot to maintain that straight shot from I fifteen all the way over to U one eleven, which which is definitely understandable. We come up over here to about sixty one hundred West to Duck Ridge Way. And this is where it shoots off to New Bingham. The question that I'm going to be asking as I'm looking at that report is we make it so far over. Does this really need to be realigned right here to bring traffic both straight through Ninety South bisecting this neighborhood and also down New Bingham? When down here we have about a forty four hundred foot span between these two. So you're about just over three quarters of a mile between the two. We would have up until New Bingham Highway, I think we have a total of was it seven lanes or five? I think it's seven lanes total. We dropped down for a little bit. But then we would go up to between the two roads. I think it was twelve lanes between the two.
Well, there's three on New Bingham currently and the the proposed Ninety South from sixty four to one eleven is a five lane section.
So in it's so we've got five lanes up to Mountain Mountain View Corridor from I fifteen to Mountain View Corridor and then increasing five to eight for that remaining. Here, let me get rid of that clear measurement from Mountain View Corridor. Let's measure the distance from here over to here. That ex that last mile and a half, my question is, do we need that many lanes for that much area? Obviously, yeah, we do need the connectivity to expand, but where there's there's, I'm I'm not seeing the draw for traffic right here on U one eleven where there hasn't been development yet. I am seeing we have some industrial that's down here. I'm also concerned about talking about how the the transportation master plan has changed. I don't remember exactly what it said on the version up until two thousand and six, but I believe the thought was while Ninety would continue straight, this would be redirected, New Bingham would be redirected through the neighborhood. But since the subdivision's been built and some of this has been built up, that renders that not necessarily possible. So it's changed from redirecting to now using both, which is why my question was are we asking how to realign this intersection or was that initial report asking, should we realign that intersection? Because as I look at this, this seems odd to have a neighborhood that's been bisected by a very, very large road. And then we know we're going to see additional residential over here, although we anticipate a commercial or retail element as well.
I I I think you, obviously in the course of studying at a very high level as well as by way of the master transportation process, we not only look at current condition, but we are looking as far out as twenty fifty. And just one of those developments, the Dry Creek Collins Project, for example, has authorization for up to three thousand units. So while the current condition may not necessarily suggest an immediate need for extension of all of the systems that are identified on the map. As you start adding residential units in not the tens or the hundreds, but the thousands, then the conversation does change in a very significant way. And you start seeing average daily trips along those roadways of ten to twenty plus thousand vehicles a day. So it's at that point, I think that we are looking at the future. The challenge that we face is we don't have a crystal ball and can't determine exactly if those units are going to be constructed seventy five to a hundred units per year or four to five hundred units per year. Two years ago, we were on track for four to five hundred units a year. Given where we are with current residential markets and interest rates and such, we're seeing numbers significantly lower. Even then, though, we believe that our conservative estimate of planning for improvements in twenty thirty one and beyond are probably a little too conservative.
And and that's, I I just wanted you to know the questions that are going to be going through my mind as I look at that report. And even though we do have all of those homes that are slated to go in here, I'm also looking at some of the subdivisions to the north, wondering, well, we don't necessarily have two highway, two roads that are basically highway capacity within the same distance, within that same spread. As from you here.
I ideally, I ideally U dot likes to see, and Ernesto can correct me, but ideally U dot likes to see one mile separation between arterials. And if you look at, for example, Ninety South to seventy eight hundred South, we are two miles
Hey Chris, leave that up.
Between. So tho- those are some of the things that our consultants and Nestor and his team, our engineering staff look at to try and ensure that we don't find ourselves behind the curve and scrambling in the same way to some degree we're scrambling with seventy eight hundred South to address some of the east west connectivity issues that we have at present.
Go ahead. Oh, okay. Okay, I'll go. I have a question regarding your history. Your timeline was really good. If this has always been a straight shot through on U dot's plan, how did we get here? When I so here's a favorite phrase that I hear from residents all the time. When I moved out here, I love that phrase, by the way. Ninety South ended at fifty sixth, right? And New Bingham went all the way across what is now Mountain View Corridor, right? That road connected Ninety South that ended at fifty six and it was a little two lane road and a little two lane road and it was middle of nowhere and it was great. But this section of Ninety South out here in the neighborhood, this orphan piece was already there. So you could tell driving on Ninety South, oh, yeah, this is going to connect to that. This is going to be bigger. That's gonna, I see where it's going to go. You dot realigned this to connect Ninety to New Bingham when they put in Mountain View.
No, New Bingham's always been there.
How how did this?
I I think as part of as part of the Mountain View Corridor process, I mean, to to some degree, how did we get here? We actually got here based on expanding north south connectivity. So we we grew Bangor and then we grew a little farther west and then we put in Mountain View and we went a little farther west.
Not not part of the question.
When we but when we developed the when U dot signed off on the environmental impact statement for Mountain View Corridor, which happened in the early two thousands.
Right.
It was at that point that they recognized the need for Ninety South in the future.
Okay, that's that's wonderful. Then why did they build it like this? Why did they build it where Ninety South, they built this big old intersection with Mountain View and Ninety South saying, we're going to deprioritize New Bingham Highway and prioritize Ninety South and Seventy Eight South.
Yeah.
And build this big old intersection here to facilitate that east west traffic. And we had this stub route of ninety of Ninety South further west. Yet they didn't connect the existing Ninety to that. They bent it to the south going down New Bingham. Was always the plan.
I think it was based at the time on where the greatest need was and the limited resources that were available. I I mean, I I I don't think that U dot is is able to always shoot for the ideal. They are looking in incremental ways to improve the system.
I'm so the my point of that is is in some respects, U dot made this bed that now they're asking people to lay in.
They didn't build that.
And they had a chance to do it right the first time. I know U dot's not always the most forward thinking organization. I get that. But like you just mentioned, we're paying for this lack of foresight on seventy eight hundred South. Now we're going to pay for U dot's lack of foresight on Ninety.
I I don't I don't think it's fair to put responsibility squarely on the shoulders of one entity. I think we all share in the growth of of this state.
Right.
I think U dot does bear some of that responsibility. I think we as cities, when we approve developments and subdivisions, I think we accept part of that responsibility as well.
Right. But what I'm saying is if this was always destined to be a straight shot up Ninety South. They built this really great road and then to move a lot of dirt to do it. You know, that that up and over Ninety, that's there's a lot of dirt movement when they put Mountain View in here.
How old is the oldest home in that neighbor in your neighborhood? And even that little Okay, and this has been on the maps for twenty five years.
Correct.
So city approved that. I like to say I'm way too young for that one. I can I might be able to say that one, get away with it. So it's, yeah, Zach, it's not, the the thing is. It's so it's yeah, uh Zach, it's not the 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 thing is how we got here.
Thanks for the interruption.
We're here. So try and debate on how we got here, whose fault, who did this, who did that? It doesn't matter anymore. And it's moving forward of how do we keep
You'll let me make
the people in this neighborhood safe.
I know, but if you let me make my point, I think I yeah, let me make my point. My point is, master plans don't always come to fruition. Ninety South is a straight road, great idea. They built it otherwise. Now we're left with what it is. Duck Ridge Way, by the way, should never be considered a collector road or an artillery road like I just mentioned on our other discussion. It's got houses on it. It's not a collector road. It's it should only ever go between Ninety and eighty-six and for the re- benefit of the residents that live there, for the most part, and those who come off of that neighborhood. It's not a it's not a it's not a high-capacity road. It's not sixty-four hundred west. It's not three lanes. Even if it is three lanes, I think it might actually be, but it's got houses on it.
It's a dead end road.
And I all I'm saying is is the best laid plans of mice and men get changed. UDOT changed them or somebody changed them. I don't care if it was you or if it was the city that had input on this when Mountain View Corridor was being studied.
And I do agree. I think plans do change. The question that we are trying to ask by way of, for example, consultant studies and master transportation studies is, should they change?
Well, this one changed. Between what was on the plan in two thousand seven to what's existing here in two thousand twenty-three.
And I'm not not here I see.
They built a big road that goes southwest instead of
I think New Bingham is
New Bingham's always gone that way.
Yeah.
What what I'm saying is when they rebuilt New Bingham Ninety and Mountain View, they didn't have
What you're suggesting is they should have they should have de-emphasized New Bingham at the time and emphasized Ninety South.
Because now Amazon was built with this with this alignment in mind. Look, you come right off Mountain View and swoop right down to Amazon.
And based on conditions at the time of construction and based on the fact that there was existing right-of-way and there was existing asphalt there, probably the sh- the shortest distance between two points was expanding New Bingham rather than completely starting with Ninety South.
And 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 since that point, the Duck Ridge Way neighborhood has been built. That's been within the last ten years at the most, seven, eight years.
Um, that was, yeah, that was approved back in two thousand and six. The city council approved that.
So can can I just suggest? The reason why UDOT probably veered New Bingham the way they did was because you have places like Cisco and Papa Pita's and Boeing and everybody out there.
Yeah.
And now Amazon. Yet that road, they knew that those developments were there or going in. And so they get they built New Bingham that way to handle the truck traffic and purposely ignored Ninety South because they knew that 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 Dry Creek at Highlands and uh you know, that you know, the Vicky Jones property and the Mike Jones property were gonna take fifteen or twenty years to develop. And so they were doing this, I'm gonna say that this is uh I used to work for him, so I can I'll throw him under the bus. This is this is typical, this would be typical to UDOT, address the current need. That's why we got mountain, that's why we got Bangor built without any overpasses. And now that's why we're putting overpasses on Bangor. That's why we built Mountain View the way we build it. We're gonna go back and build Mountain View as a freeway. Um, that's why we built back is the way we did it and it's planned for eight lanes or some dang thing. And it will get widened when there's houses out there. And so to 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 say that UDOT failed there, I'd say what UDOT did was they said, based on limited resources, they funded it to get trucks uh to get trucks um out to where trucks to the commercial areas. And they left that that other road knowing that it would go through to handle the housing. Now, we we obviously, one of the things that we're gonna do is look at alternatives and can we use sixty-four hundred west is the as you know, and 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 have two left turns there? That'll remain to be seen if that's anywhere close to efficient to move traffic. But what we have to do at this point in time is let the process work. Um, y- you know, you're you're right that 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 the transportation master plan um is it may be part of the general plan. But at the end of the day, the general plan's our responsibility. Transportation master plan is put together by uh is not is not put together by a citizens group like the general plan. It's put together by professional engineers and and all of those other kind of people. And we need to let that process take take uh uh let it run its course. If if we're premature now, then what you have to ask yourself, what are the political ramifications? Are we do we are are we gonna make uh legislators mad? Are we gonna get UDOT mad at us to where UDOT just says, fine, we're gonna do it and they just put it in anyway? So uh you you know, we we we've got to be smart about this and we've got to let the process ma- play out. And we've got to let uh and and our involvement on this is is way premature. And we we've got to let this process play out so that we get the best possible product and not say, oh, we're gonna stop it right now and and uh then have to deal with all the other ramifications and political fallout because of that.
So I I don't necessarily think anyone's asking to change anything. Uh rather, this was brought to the council because people are seeing action on Ninety South. People are seeing the road built between sixty-fourth and U one eleven and starting to ask questions. I think for the council, it's good to know what's happening. And the the study will be helpful to read. I do want to give Councilmember Jacob a chance to finish his his thought. And then I know Councilmember Pax also been waiting patiently to to speak as well.
Thank you and thank you, David, for your pick. Um, all all I'm saying is people keep throwing out it's been on the master plan, it's been on the master plan, it's been on the master plan, it's on the master plan, so therefore the master plan is gonna be the master plan, you're gonna master planet. That's fine, but the master plan was not followed twelve year or ten years ago when this intersection was built. Between fifteen and ten years ago, if you wanna go back to design. So master plans are great, but like we always hear from developers and everybody else, the best laid plans are meant to be broken, meant to be changed. So if this is the best connection.
Just so that I understand, your your suggestion is that back in two thousand eight, New Bingham Highway was not on the city's master transportation plan.
Connecting Ninety to New Bingham and orphaning that other little pu- portion of Ninety was not. That's what I'm being told. That's not my assertion. That's what I'm being told. And so my my point is, now that we are left with what we are left with and things have now happened as a result of that. For example, a huge old warehouse with a bunch of trucks that carries a lot of traffic. Things have happened now because of that. It's time to revisit maybe what the master plan has always been and has always been planned on. And I understand we're early, but that's a good thing. Let's look at it now before we're stuck with something that's not.
And I and I think that's what we're doing now.
Right. And that's why and that's why I'm just addressing the timeline issue. I like getting involved at this point because all I hear this campaign season is, why didn't we plan Seventy-eight Hundred South right? Well, here we are in the same situation, twenty years into the future. And if if we don't plan this right, in twenty years, whoever's running for city council is gonna hear, well, why did they approve on this development without proving the road in first? That's what we're gonna hear. But before you interrupt me again, can you scroll east a little bit on this? Just one other thing that I'm always hearing on this is zoom out just a little bit so we can see Old Bingham and New Bingham at the same time. There you go. You got this little triangle neighborhood here where New Bingham and Ninety, you know, these
And and just for clarification, Old Bingham, you mean?
No, no, the so we got the neighborhood under consideration now, this triangle ledge here here out west, Ninety and New Bingham, the near area we've just been talking about a lot, this fifty-one homes. If you look over here where Old Bingham comes off of Ninety, you have the same neighborhood. The same thing happened here. Keep going right there, left, just a little bit. Same little triangle. They call themselves the ledge neighborhood. You have the same, you have the same little triangle issue, that neighborhood right there, same thing happened there. When they rerouted New Bingham, made Ninety South the main road. That little area got orphaned, like it's like one street that doesn't connect to the neighborhood to the north. I'm just saying, we've been here before. Neighborhoods will develop. I'm not concerned about orphaning that neighborhood because neighborhoods to the west are gonna develop. We'll deal with the transportation issues or the safety issues and the things like that as they come up, as the studies are done. Um, so I'm not so concerned about that. Uh what I am concerned about is is blindly cutting the ends off the pot roast because that's what grandma did because her pan was too small. We can take a whole fresh look at this part of it. Now, maybe west of sixty-fourth, we that, okay, ship has sailed, fine. But this ship hasn't sailed yet. We can take a fresh look at this. Knowing what has happened since that plan was made and busted. We can we can look at this fresh again and say, you know what, maybe connecting Duck Ridge to New Bingham Highway is not a good idea. And we can look at that again. That's that's all I wanna say is that, yes, this has been on the plan forever. But let's get this right instead of just getting this, oh, well, we thought it was right twenty years ago. That's all I'm saying. And now I'm done and we happily hand it over to Councilmember Pax. And anybody who wants to interrupt, me, not him.
Thank you, Councilmember Jacob, and thank you, Mr. Davidson. I understand, you know, we're we're throwing out questions to you that we don't necessarily presume that you have all of the answers to, since you've only been here a few months. And so thank you for fielding all of these. I I think that we uh we're asking rhetorical questions and putting ideas out there so that we understand, so that everyone can understand what's on our hearts and minds. So in my conversations, uh as has been expressed tonight, that UDOT is amenable to considering options to what's currently being proposed. And 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 thank you, Mr. Davidson, for also mentioning that plans are malleable within the city because we're dealing with outside entities from the state as well as our own uh con- construction crews here. And I'm elected to represent District Four residents. I don't wanna be myopic to presume that transportation needs aren't needed outside of the district I represent. But I'm elected to represent District Four, who have brought considerable concern regarding the current projection uh of what's going to happen uh with with the plans to expand nine thousand south. And I think we should remember too, it's not just five lanes. Really, if you consider the bike lanes, that's a wide road. That's like seven lanes. If we've got uh if we've got bike lanes, so that could serve as a buffer. Uh but but also it makes it uh even wider. So obviously, twenty-five years ago, demographics were different when Bingham uh in in the Bingham Road has been modified. So nine thousand south could definitely be modified. So that's why I'm grateful for our conversation to say, let's pause and consider alternatives for safety and transportation and neighborhood connectivity. Just because that's what the current plan is, doesn't mean that we need to follow through with it, given the current state of the information that we're receiving and alternatives that can be pursued. Thank you.
I played traffic engineer and I gave Brian a little sketch, so okay. All I'm saying, yeah, I did, I did. I'm I'm saying, let's look at what if it goes through? I mean, we can try to look at whose fault it was, doesn't matter where we're at. I'm glad you guys are here early because we're we're talking about before it goes through. So what else can we do? So the thought I just gave Brian is what if we dead end, is it Duck Duckworth? Um, that, yeah, if we dead end that and have it turned down into New Bingham towards going towards the dog park. And then put the light down there. I don't know. I'm not a traffic engineer, but it's an idea. And that's what I'm saying is, you know, it's our job to listen to you. Obviously, you want some ideas for safety. Not if, but when this road goes through, because that's unfortunately probably the way it's going to go. Can it be stopped? I don't know. UDOT's not, it it took me five years for us, five years to get paint on the road to get Kayleen and her neighbors out of their neighborhood a little more safer. So, yeah, we're five years maybe we got a chance and do something. I'm glad you're here. Can keep coming up with ideas. Look at some things, but again, look at worst-case scenario. Whatever goes through, what's the best way? Do we put those walk paths over? Do we do? Keep those ideas coming. Work with these guys.
And you're pointing to us more than that is the specific intent of extending the relationship with the consultant.
Yeah, exactly.
Is to look at, okay, what if
Yeah.
this happened and this happened, how would traffic flow through the neighborhood? Where would we connect so on and so forth? So that is the intent of extending the relationship with the consultant to to glean additional answers to those questions.
All right, so this one was primarily informational, letting us know what's happened. The study's available. Um, any other questions before we move on to the next part of this item? All right, Alan, can you go back to the slides? I think there were a couple other items, the transportation fees.
Yeah, Corden, uh Corvus got that. I'll get my slide up. Uh, this is purely informational as well, just uh in in fact, I'll just give you a heads up. You don't need to say anything. Just ponder on this in the future. About ten seven, twelve years ago, cities, uh a few cities started experimenting with a uh revenue source called the transportation utility fee. Um, most cities, I would say probably all cities including us, subsidize the maintenance of their roads um through the city's general fund. They take class BNC road funds, we add city general fund dollars, and that's how we pay for our overlays, our maintenance asphalt and so on. Um, about about eleven years ago, twelve years ago, a couple of cities started uh implementing a transportation utility fee. This is a monthly fee on uh homes and commercial properties within the city to assist with the uh main the cost for maintaining roads. Um, there were about eleven cities that implemented this when Pleasant Grove, one of those cities got challenged in court, whether that was a legal fee to charge or whether it was a tax. Uh earlier in twenty twenty-three, the Utah Supreme Court ruled on this issue and said it is legal. Um, cities can charge, they can levy a transportation utility fee to assist with road maintenance. Um, but then they kind of stopped there. They didn't explain or defend um doesn't gross process for coming up with that fee. Um, we anticipate
Didn't they remand that?
Yeah, they remanded it back to the district court. They overturned the district court ruling and remanded it.
Because they were trying to figure out if the fee was too high, if if the fee was truly a fee or if it was a tax because of the 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 amount.
Yeah, it became if it became the 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 real real the question is, can you charge a fee to pay for the maintenance of city roads? Um, and is that transportation utility fee truly a tax or not? The district court said, ah, hey, city uh s- city streets, that's the general purpose of the purpose, therefore, not to pay for the taxes and the fees. The Supreme Court overruled them. Uh, we remanded it back to the district court, but then um kind of imparted here, if the fee gets too shy.
Then the fees
Yeah, or yeah, it becomes a tax. Also, the idea is, you know, the manner in which the fee is that mattered, but they didn't rule on they didn't make this judgment column whether Pleasant Grove's manner in which the fee is assessed mattered. Pleasant Grove had a motto there. Um, they did a big study, determined the average, flips generation for different property types and assess the fee based on essentially how much traffic each type of land use generated. Um, I share all this with you to just say, this is a possible tool in our budgeting toolkit uh that has not been approved uh by the Supreme Court. And this has been challenged in court. We didn't wanna touch it. We uh we didn't know that it's been land. While the Supreme Court said, yeah, this is fair game, this is a possible tool that cities can use. Um, there are about eleven or so cities that do use it. Um, we do not. Um, and it will be up to you and up to, you know, uh future council and future budget decisions to see if we ever want to or don't want to. Uh, I just share this with you to say, this is something we can consider and may consider in the future. So keep it in mind. Uh, the legislature will anticipate on this next session will probably weigh in on that manner of assessment that the Supreme Court didn't put in on. So there is possibly some de- some future definitions around this issue. Um, but just to give you kind of some idea uh about what this means, we subsidize our city road maintenance uh fund with one million dollars of general fund money this year. That's not counting all the
You're presenting this, we don't subsidize it.
You're presenting this, we don't subsidize it. The taxpayer pays, pays for those roads through their property tax, right?
Exactly, yes.
So we're not subsidizing anything. We're paying for it through the general fund with property taxes.
Right, right, yes.
When you subsidize, it's, it denotes that we're helping out in an area we shouldn't be and. And I guess that might be a discussion for a later date, but it's clearly rubbing me wrong.
We won't use the word subsidize. The original thought with the B and C road funds was, B and C road funds would place a road maintenance. Then I'll cover the full cost of road maintenance, so we have to use general fund money to supplement the, uh. Off the B and C road funds to maintain our roads, yeah. Um. Okay, so we, we supplement B and C road funds, road maintenance to two, about two point three million plus capital projects. Uh, for example, Provo, a similar sized city, Provo implements the transportation utility fee. They get a two point two eight million, so very similar amount, two point three million. From their transportation utility fee. Uh, so that's how they supplement their road maintenance costs.
They, they, they have their utility fee, they charge the property owners twenty or thirty dollars a month, whatever. Or a year or whatever the case may be. If they didn't do that, they would just raise their property tax.
Correct.
So I'll, correct me if I'm wrong, this is just a shifting of costs depending on what. The council thinks is more fair or equitable as opposed to a property tax. But at the end of the day, somebody's still cut, forking out the money. It's not like there's magic, not, uh. You know, so when Provo has two point eight million dollars, they're char- the, the residents and their businesses and everybody, BYU, whoever. They're paying that. It's just coming, it's, they're paying it a different way.
It's the method of the revenue, correct? Again, you don't need to do anything with this. We just wanna make you aware of it, especially as we anticipate it might come through legislative session. We didn't want, uh, it come February, March for that to be saying, what is this revenue source the legislature's talking about?
We've heard about three times, we don't need to say anything, but does anybody have any questions?
I just wanna say thank you. It's nice to actually have information before we need it, so I appreciate that.
Move to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn.
Oh, are we, are we still, are we still talk, are we still had the discussion on seniority? I withdraw.
Thank you.
I, I forgot we had the discussion on seniority.
So that does bring us to our next item, the discussion on seniority. Uh, in the interest of time, I'll, I'll introduce this one quickly. Um, as we're looking at what the council landscape will look like next year, um, the question of seniority has come up. If somebody is a point, or right now, our definition of seniority, uh, states that seniority is calculated by consecutive length. Uh, is length of consecutive years served. Now, there used to be elements in our council rules that said, based on seniority, there were certain things that might be considered. But those things have all disappeared from council rules, so we have a definition of seniority that's not necessarily invoked anywhere. Um, so we could discuss how we want to modify that definition of seniority. If should, if it should be applied to appointed terms as well as to elected terms, if it should be total amount of time served. Or just consecutive terms, or we could also say, let's just remove the definition since it's not really invoked anywhere. Um, for interest of ease, I would, well, council, what are your thoughts?
I'm good to just remove it. I don't want to make changes to council rules at this point. When the council body can be different, so if we're gonna alter the way it reads and stuff, then I don't really wanna do that. But if we're just removing it because it's not pertinent to our rules any longer, I'm okay doing that.
Council member Green.
Yeah, I'm, seniority doesn't matter, uh, not really. Let's, I, I, I'm good with just striking the whole seniority definition and moving on.
Okay, council member Pax.
Great, thanks for asking, Chair McConaughey. Right, I see in the landscape that we have right now with the pending, uh, appointment that we need to make toward the conclusion of the calendar year in an election year. Um, I think we address issues as they come up and this is a very purient issue. I don't want us to be lame duck council members not taking action on something that we could otherwise take action on. Um, I, I've thought about it and it seems the consecutive term. Let, let's say that someone, I mean, this, this has happened before where someone gets reelected after having been on council. I, I'd be amenable to changing it to be years served or it doesn't need to be consecutive. Um, and in our new form of government, where we have a chair and a vice chair. Gosh, we could even have a pro tem, whi- which would be the third in, in command. Um, and maybe that goes to the most senior person. Um, so seniority does matter, but if. In, unless there's something more purient than where we sit on, on the dais, um. I, I'm happy to continue the conversation as, as always, especially in light of what we're going to have to. Uh, be doing in November or, or December in, in terms of, uh, potentially filling a vacancy.
So, a- and, um.
Oh, I'll just throw my two cents in. If seniority matters, I think we should spell it out and have that discussion. If seniority doesn't matter. Then let's not worry about spelling it out and having that discussion. I have my thoughts of how it should happen and not, and whether consecutive or not and, and how you do it when two people get elected at the same time or whatever. But i- if it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, so, doesn't matter.
And that was gonna be the clarification I brought up with, uh, council member Pax's point. It used to impact like potentially seating, but that's no longer impacted by seniority. So it is, it's an orphan definition, so if there's no objection, I would suggest, um. As council member Whitlock suggested, um, we wanna have minimal impact on things that could materially impact a future council. But a definition that doesn't ha- drive any action, uh, it, it's more of a housekeeping thing in my opinion. So if there's no objection from the council to deleting that definition, I would, as. Is the council okay if this goes on consent for the first meeting of December?
Again, what goes on?
A deletion.
A deletion, yeah.
Deletion of the definition that's not invoked.
Okay, yep.
All right, not seeing any objection, that'll be on consent with likely some minutes. Now, I would ask if, uh, there are no housekeeping items. Council member Green, did you have a motion you were itching to make?
Oh, well, I, I actually have one, one little thing. Uh, I was at the, um, this is like the kind of thing that you bring up in council reports. But I just wanna put it out there since we had some lively discussions tonight, which I think is awesome. Uh, I was at the Chamber West, uh, Board of Directors Retreat about two weeks ago, week and a half ago, two weeks ago. And, um, and one of the things, they had a training done by somebody from, uh, IHC, who's the vice president of whatever, I don't know. You know, he came and, and talked about effective boards for the chamber board, but I think it applies to councils too, and it was really cool. One, one of the things he said was, was you need to foster an environment where it's okay to disagree, which I think is. I think, I think we do that pretty well. Um.
I'm not so sure.
The, the second piece of that.
I disagree with that.
The second piece of that is, um. Is, uh, so there's three pieces. That was number one. Number two was, was silence is consent. If, if there's a conversation, we, we tend to have a couple of us that dominate conversations. I'm not gonna look at anybody in particular, I'll look over here. And, uh, anyway, and if, if, if you don't, if you have an objection to something and you don't speak up. You're tacitly agreeing, even if you have other ideas. So, uh, what, what he was saying was. Was if, if it looks like discussion is going one way and you disagree with that, it's your responsibility if you foster the environment where you can disagree. It's your responsibility to speak up and, and have that discussion and, and disagree better, is I guess what Spencer Cox would say. Have the discussion, otherwise you're agreeing with what's being said. And then the third one was establish a spokesperson, which we do by rule. And once a decision has been made by the body, it's the decision of the body. Individuals may disagree and we speak as individuals in disagreement in other forums and with other people and with even the media. But you have to make clear that it's as an individual and that you are not speaking for the council as a body, once that decision has been made. So it was just three really cool, uh, points that were brought up in that training that I thought were really kinda cool and should be brought up with the council. And just shared with you guys and I thank you for giving me thirty seconds to do that, or two minutes, or five.
Great, thanks Chair. Hey, council member Green, I'll be happy to hear that I saw the, on Peachjar from Copper Hills High. The advertisement for the West Jordan Youth Council. Um, I noticed that that came on the sixteenth. And applications are due on the twentieth, so a little bit of a concern that people might not receive that or get applications in on time. And so I just wanted to mention that the word has gone out, um, while also perhaps not, not being lethargic. But might wanna look at that deadline of only, uh, four days between dissemination and deadline.
Well, I think the deadline was put there, but I, I, no, we're not gonna reject applications because they missed the deadline date. I, I can, I can tell you that much. We want as many, we wanna fill the, the youth council with as many. Uh, up to the number that we're authorized with, so we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna. If it lights a fire, if they're late, we'll be good with it.
Right. I, I guess my last administrative item question would be, would the council like to see council remarks added to work sessions? All right.
I'm sorry, move to adjourn.
Second, motion by council member Green, second by myself, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Six, Ellen.
Vote passes six in favor, council member Worthing has, she, she, she stepped away. Um, she, she's not here for the vote though, so, six, so. And just for the record, I, I will hit that. I just wanna note for the record, Apollo Burger is open for another two hours, eighteen minutes. We stand adjourned.